So order the February first uh Grotton Town Council meeting at six thirty seven.
Okay, and councillor Melendez, mayor, he's here, uh councillor Bordelon. Is here councillor Baumgartner is here.
Here.
Uh Essiary.
Here.
Franco.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
And Lester.
Here.
Good night everybody, that's nine.
Thank you. Onto the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials. We have councillor Parker who's prepared to read a proclamation.
Proclamation recognizing Black History Month, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in nineteen fifteen of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the two thousand twenty-two national theme for the observance is black health and wellness and acknowledges the legacy of not only black scholars and medical practitioners, but also the birth workers, doulas, midwives, naturopaths, and herbalists. And whereas in the still overhanging shadow of the COVID nineteen pandemic, black people must decry the inequalities intentionally fostered into systems to limit the well-being and all forms of black lives, black communities. Black communities must look to the past and embrace the rituals, traditions, and healing methods of ancestors and whereas the town of Groton is committed to an inclusive community where all citizens are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential recog- and potential contributions to our community. Now therefore be it resolved in recognition of African Americans in our community. T. The Groton Town Council does hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-two to be Black History Month and encourages all citizens to concentrate on their well-being and to continue activities that fosters a world that is more just, peaceful, and safe for everyone. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this first day of February two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you councillor Parker for reading that and thank you clerk McCauser for crafting that um proclamation. We have nothing for public.
That was, that was uh signed by mayor Melendez, by the way.
Yes.
Yes, it's not on our paperwork, that on my copy. Thank you. Sorry about that, mayor.
That's okay. Um so thank you for that. Uh we have nothing for public hearings, so we'll go on to receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council. Please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. To register to speak, please email council@groton-CT.gov by four thirty P M on February first. Okay, so I have a list here, on this to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. To register to speak, please email council@groton-CT.gov by four thirty P M on February first. Okay, so I have a list here, on this to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. All right. Um so I have first on my list Kathy Chase. She here?
Yes, she is.
You're here.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you councillors. Kathy Chase, one forty-six Indian Field Road. Um I'm an R T M member uh for District One, but I'm not here in that capacity tonight. And the letter I'm about to read was a collaborative effort with Beverly Washington. We are here today to talk about bringing our community together. One of the best ways to do that is to have a town green where members of the Groton community can gather. Be it alone to read a book and people watch, or have lunch with a friend after hiking or biking at Bluff Point or Haley Farm. We have all heard the stories of isolation causing mental and physical deterioration. Having a town green would promote residents' mental and physical well-being. A town green contributes to the identity of the community. It also connects people together, has economic benefits, appeals to people of all ages, and provides passive and active recreation. We would have a clear space that could be used for concerts, fairs, and general play. Town greens also have environmental benefits. It will have trees and shrubs and little critters will visit also. It will be a green space. As a community, we need to promote our residents' well-being. The Quantic Plains Park has been used as a gathering place for events. However, the only place that can be used for these purposes is the perimeter. The field must be preserved for sports. Therefore, we are asking you to consider the Claude Chester School property for the town green. The Claude Chester property is centrally located. We already have the Thrive Fifty-Five Active Living Center, the Groton Public Library, the Community Center, and the Town Hall. This area is the hub of Groton. The Claude Chester property is eleven point five two acres and we would be perfect with plenty of gathering space and parking. The presentation given at the January twenty-fifth community um committee of the whole meeting regarding the Groton Family Farm was a great presentation with great ideas. However, economically speaking, it is not currently a usable idea. The Groton Family Farm owner wants the existing structures to remain if they sell the property to the town. This would be more buildings that need maintaining. Groton doesn't need more buildings to maintain. In addition, in the plans presented for the farm property, there is no parking. If there was a town green at this location, where would people park? The town already owns Claude Chester. The amount of money the taxpayers would have to contribute to buy a piece of property when we already own a bigger piece of property is not fiscally sound. Once the town buys a piece of property, there needs to be money to develop the property into a town green. Where will that come from? The taxpayers? Groton has again been designated as a distressed municipality. According to the general uh the Connecticut General Statute, section thirty-two dash nine P, a distressed municipality should be based on high unemployment and poverty, aging housing stock, and lower declining rates of growth in job creation population and per capita income. We are paying for three new schools for the next twenty years or so. We have aging infrastructure in Groton that needs attention. Looking at the last few years of town budgets, anytime cuts need to be made, the CIPs are the first to go. Whereas with the Claude Chester property, we would only need to come up with money for developing the town green. It is not good judgment to spend taxpayers' monies to purchase property when we already have property that is suitable for this purpose. The town of Groton already has infrastructure that needs to be repaired or will need repairs. The Groton Family Farm property would only lend to more buildings to maintain. Why would we incur more costs than necessar- necessary to have a vibrant town green in the center of Groton? Look at any town that has a town green, you will see a vibrant, engaged community. Please consider the Claude Chester property for the Groton Town Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Beverly Washington.
Thank you, Mayor Melendez.
Thank you.
Let me put the video on. Okay, um I'm here. Uh my name's Beverly Washington. I live thirty Pennsylvania Avenue in Groton. I'm here in support of the town green being located at Claude Chester property, property. And one of the reasons is um in the town, we are trying to build apartment buildings to attract people who will be employed at E B to live in the town of Groton. A lot of these people that will be employed at E B are going to be young people. Young people need a place to gather, to socialize. They want outdoor activities and things to do. So if we had a town green, that might help promote people, especially these young people that are gonna be moving to Groton, to move to Groton. So I'm here to speak in support of the town green being located at Claude Chester because it's, the size is perfect, and we can have parking and everything that Kathy Chase stated before me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh next on the list, I have Roseanne Kowalski. Just name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Roseanne Kowalski, twenty-four Ann Avenue. First, I would like to give a big shout out to our Ann Avenue Public Works Snowplow gal, Beth Russell. She did a fantastic job during the storm. Thank you, Beth. Please let her know. Also, I agree with the comments of Representative Chase in Washington regarding Claude Chester um becoming a town green. But now, regarding the Mystic Oral School Mega Development Disaster. Like so many people, I do not trust the new developments regarding Blue Lotus quote acquiring Ressler's assets. It appears that this quote transfer is prohibited in all the signed agreements between Ressler and the town of Groton and between Ressler and the state. I would like to know tonight, is there a proposal from Blue Lotus? If so, please provide it to the public. If not, how and why was it described in the newspaper? The town manager has assured me that he intends to be completely transparent regarding this situation. However, based on past experience, I do not trust the town council, town staff, or the town attorney to make sure that the quote transfer of assets from Ressler to Blue Lotus at the Mystic Oral School property is in the best interest of the residents of Groton. I believe the town council needs to change their approach and attitude toward land use deals instigated and brought forward by the planning department. Specifically, there must be an awareness by our elected officials that the residents and taxpayers are more invested in the development of our communities than town staff. The town council must forbid town staff and the town attorney from making deals with developers before the public is aware of what is going on. Hopefully, that is not what is currently happening with the Mystic Oral School property, Ressler, and Blue Lotus. There should be accountability for the town staff and town attorney that signed a development agreement when they did not have the authority to do so because the Planning and Zoning Commission did not approve a zone change for the Mystic Oral School property. But the town council has accountability as well. Town council members have stated publicly, quote, "We have to trust town staff." However, the question is, did town staff present a rosy and too-good-to-be-true scenario to the town council in order to get their support for the Mystic Oral School Mega Development Disaster? We will never know because all the discussions were in executive session. Moving forward, the town council should reconsider blindly trusting town staff regarding land use deals that they instigate. Another point, I understand that the Mystic Oral School Mega Development Disaster is not the quote only issue in town, but be aware that it has the potential to be the most expensive issue in town for all taxpayers in the town and city of Groton. There are many questions that need to be answered regarding the latest developments with the Mystic Oral School property. If the town manager is making the effort to be transparent, then town staff and the town attorney should follow suit. It is not ethical for the interests of town staff and the town attorney to be the motivation for any deals or decisions made on behalf of the Groton residents ever for any property. The town council must protect Groton residents from development deals that are not good for the community, do not mix with the character of the neighborhoods, approved out of public view, and end up in mediation and lawsuits. One last point, the town council should never have another executive session regarding the Mystic Oral School property. Thank you.
Uh I forgot to ask for the last couple speakers if there was any clarifying questions from the council. If so, do so now.
I have actually several more speakers.
Yeah, yeah, I was just.
Oh, okay.
I was supposed to ask for each person and uh.
Okay.
Each person, and I forgot to do so. Um. So next on my list, I have Beth Tillman.
Good evening, Beth Tillman, nine two five River Road. I have reviewed the last house session, and I was exceedingly disturbed by certain aspects of it. The most disturbing was the continuing divisiveness on the part of some councillors. This adds nothing to the ability of the council to undertake business. In fact, it detracts totally from the ability to work together. I would suggest, in most times when I have encountered this, it has been suggested that the group does a ropes course to learn how to work together. I know that it's pretty impossible to have the council do that, but I do believe that it would be worthwhile to bring in someone to give some sort of ability to curb some of this divisive behavior. We were told by everyone and their election platforms that everything was going to be transparent going forward, especially having to do with the excess properties. Well, again, the executive session where the bombshell of Blue Lotus had already been dropped and had been shared by the town manager, it it seemed rather disingenuous for the council to go into executive session to discuss things that were not yet known to the public and were not under protected executive session speech. There was nothing. There was no reason why there should have been an executive session. It does not fall under the statutory rationale for an executive session. There's another phrase that is getting bandied about quite a bit, and that is due diligence. Part of that was in the council meeting, part of that was in emails back and forth with the town manager. It seems to be considered to be almost a done deal that Blue Lotus will be assuming the position of Ressler if they do their due diligence over sixty days and decide that they want to become the new developer for Mystic Oral School property. There was, if we can hearken back for several years to the origin of this agreement, and it was an agreement with Jeffrey Ressler Homes. It was not an agreement with Blue Lotus. The development agreement with the town and the purchase and sale agreement with the state both seem to prohibit this. And yet we are being told that a transfer of all interest of Jeffrey Ressler may not really be a transfer of interest and therefore could circumvent the entire R F P process. I have real concerns about this because this particular group does not appear to have any track record whatsoever of being able to develop anything. The, well, my husband has done a lot of research on that, so I will refer to him in that area. That brings up the whole R F P process. Prior to the election, there was a lovely workshop with the town manager, well, not a workshop, but part of one of the meetings was a delineation of what the hopes were for an R F P process. Doesn't seem like we've had anything else happen since that time. And we're talking now into the fourth month since the original plan was trotted out. I would love to know what is going on, who is vetting this, who is involved in it, and why we have seen absolutely no progress. We have a lot of situations in town that require us to have a valid R F P process. Supposedly, we are going to be issuing one for a new town attorney. What's going to govern how that's done? What are the rules and what are the procedures? It would be really nice for the public to know how that is all going to go down. Then, we haven't heard anything again about the short-term rental situation and whether the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be taking that on. This particular group has the um bed and breakfast folks and the uh verbo folks have taken over many communities and have destroyed the ability of people to remain resident in their communities. We need to address this before it's even later in the process. We've already had transfers of homes in the desirable historic district of Mystic that were twice the amount of what a regular person would have paid for such home because there is the expectation of great monetary gain. We need to stop this. We need to stop it now. The longer we wait, the harder it's going to be. The bed and breakfast people have indicated that they have lots of money to sue any town that tries to impede their use and development. So we really, really need to act, and we really, really need to examine what other places have done to try to manage this. Um I think that's all I would like to address this evening. Thank you for your time. And I'm sorry, I forgot to give you a proper greeting. So to the council, to the town manager, and to the town clerk, greetings and good evening.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Next on my list, I have a Van Brown. Name and address for the record. Thank you.
Uh good evening, Mayor Melendez and town councillors. Uh my name is Van Brown. I live at nine two five River Road, Mystic, on of Groton. According to the day, Jeffrey Ressler has agreed to sell Ressler Homes LLC to the Blue Lotus Group LLC. I have learned that the Blue Lotus is a significant symbol in Buddhism, meaning enlightenment. I do not find it to be so in association with those transferees. The proposal fails for four reasons. Both the town development agreement and the state purchase and sales agreement prohibited any transfer prior to a substantial completion of phase one. Town Development Agreement, section eleven oh one, A, no transfer shall occur with respect to the property without a written consent of the town, and B, developer may create a single-purpose entity to act as the exclusive developer of the project. Blue Lotus is not a single-purpose entity of Ressler's creation. Parties, number two, parties con- to a contract cannot unilaterally substitute a new party with which the remaining party has not contracted without the consent of the remaining party. Three, Blue Lotus does not give any indication that it is a qualified developer and exhibits some of the Blue Lotus smoke and mirrors practices, making any partnership with them seemingly ill-advised. It is not appropriate, number four, and perhaps illegal to change the scope of development, which won the award of exclusive developer for Ressler Homes to the detriment of those who originally made a more modest proposal. There seems to be some question on the council's part as to whether or not Ressler's transaction constitutes a transfer. I received the following from Mr. John Burke, town manager. "In terms of our agreement, it's not legally considered a transfer since they would be fully acquiring the company, including all assets, liabilities, contracts, et cetera," end quote. "I believe an attorney would tell us that is exactly what constitutes a transfer." In a subsequent email, Mr. Burke added, "I should add that my comments are based on what we hope." "Might be that whatsoever is supplying information to the town stating that a complete acquisition of Ressler Homes LLC by the Blue Lotus Group is not a transfer. It's either ill-informed, disingenuous, self-serving, and are making a specious argument." Preliminary due diligence indicates that accepting Blue Lotus Group as a developer requires skepticism. There is no information available to me that indicates Blue Lotus Group is or ever was a developer. Blue Lotus Group formed a Florida LLC in two thousand eight and dissolved it in twenty twelve. Eight years later, Blue Lotus Group LLC, New York now, was formed on March twenty twenty. They have no discernible region or U S presence by their filing or a Google search and are represented according to their filing by corporate services company, making them appear to be a desk drawer company. They have a website that advertises senior living featuring studio photos of happy seniors, but no facilities. Under Communities on that website, I noted the title was Coming Soon. That page also claims that they are an opportunistic purchaser of senior living facilities. They claim a senior retirement home in Palmetto, Florida. I went to the contacts page on that website and clicked on the Blue Lotus Senior Living shown on Google Maps. When I zoomed into the site and went to the street view, it was a chicken wings joint and a trailer park. Worth noting that none of the management of Blue Lotus Group slash Symphony Senior Living, their Canada operated operating area, live in the same locale, Palmetto, Florida, in Texas, Calgary, and in Ottawa. This would be consistent with the desk drawer LLC filing in New York. They do have senior facilities in Canada, so hardly the upscale or luxurious facilities claim. The town needs to stop this beco- before it becomes another embarrassment. There is nothing to show that the Blue Lotus Group might be worth the time and money of the town. I do not, I did not think there could be a less qualified developer than Jeff Lee Ressler. Blue Lotus has proved me wrong. Thank you for yourself, LaSack.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the council?
Yes, I have one.
Councillor Westerveld.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Van, I believe I heard you say that um there's no evidence that they are truly a developer. Uh can you, can you expand on that some? I mean, did they have, they had shovel on the ground? Have you found any um facilities that they've actually built?
There does not appear that they have ever built anything. The um they portray themselves as pretty much as managers, not as builders. They buy uh operating facilities. Theoretically, that's what they claim, and specialize in turnarounds. Um the uh they do not have anything that I can find that they have built in the United States. They have four facilities in Ottawa, Canada. Uh they are what you might kindly call a B or a B minus uh level facility. And they appear, and this is drawing from what they're, the little blur they write about themselves who manage these facilities. There is no indication in their websites about these facilities that they ever did anything but manage. They did not build them uh to the be- to the best of my search, and um I find nothing that they ever built anywhere.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Next on my list is a Mike Allen. Just need your name and address for the record.
Uh good evening. Uh my name is Mike Allen. I live at twenty-seven Wintergreen Hill Road in Danbury, Connecticut. And I really don't have much to say other than I was the person behind the podcast uh with the Whispering Giant statue. And I just wanted to thank the good people of Groton who uh helped me put all these pieces together. Uh and to say that I've been in touch with the artist and continue to be in touch with the artist Peter Toth uh and Chris Regan, who's got possession of the statue at the moment. And I know there's going to be a resolution on this in the future, and this is obviously not my business at all. It's your business. Uh but I just wanted to say uh again, thank you to the good people, and and you're very fortunate, I think, to have this statue, uh having seen it in Ocean City, Maryland with my wife on vacation, a, you know, the the Maryland version of this trail of the Whispering Giants, and then to come back to Connecticut to do a podcast on it and find it was in Groton. Uh it it's a pretty spectacular. Uh, it's a pretty spectacular thing that's been done and I hope that you'll be able to find your way to to resurrect it at some point in the future. I hope it's not too far damaged for that. But thank you very much for your time. It won't take any more of your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Next on my list, I have a Kelly Poulsen.
Sorry.
There's councillor Bartolomez, hand up.
Oh, sorry, councillor Bartolomez.
No, it's okay. No apology needed. I just wanted to ask about the podcast. Um, is there a way I can search the podcast?
Uh, yes, there is. If you go to um, amazingtalesct for Connecticut dot podbean dot com. Uh, that's the landing page for uh, my podcast episodes. Uh, it was now, there's been some episodes published since then, so you'll have to scroll back. I think it's episode twenty three, but I could be mistaken.
Great. And um, is this something new that you're you're tracking these particular artists, this particular artists, or is this something recently that you've started uh, following and podcasting up?
Uh, I, there's only one podcast episode on this. I hope to do a follow up, uh, you know, assuming that something happens in Groton in terms of resurrecting it. I will do a follow up show on it. Uh, but no, this was a single episode that uh, you know, again, the interest was spurred having found the similar statue in Maryland by mistake on vacation and coming back and and tracking it down and finding it in Groton and that it was missing and then finding it, uh, you know, at Old Mystic Village. So it was uh, it was, it was great. And I think it's councillor Franco is going to have something to say about this later on.
Great. Um, yes, I'll add something to that after. Thank you for your interest.
No, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. This is something actually that's been very passionate to me uh, that was stated about a year ago. So thank you for tracking it.
Well, you're absolutely welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Next on the list is Kelly Poulsen. Just name and address for the record.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. This is Kelly Poulsen, one twelve Laurel Wood Road. Um, I'm addressing the council today and I really appreciate all of your time. Thank you very much. The um, there's currently ordinances for Connecticut State, Town and City governing all of state, town and city lights for light trespass and light pollution. But there is no ordinances for residential. And I would respect respectfully request to have ordinances set in place for the town of Groton for residential light trespass and residential light pollution. Um, I have been trying to get help from the police, but they keep on telling me there's nothing they can do. My across the street neighbor, I'm the only one in the neighborhood that has to deal with this. My across the street neighbor is continuing to escalate. Um, this is what I have to deal with on a nightly basis of four lights on all night, every single night. When I asked respectfully for them not to leave their lights on all night long, about eleven months ago, they said they would not. I asked them for their light pole should be shielded, should have blocking plates to prevent light trespass onto neighbors' properties. They said they would not use it unless it was shielded and the following night they had all three lights on all night long, every night. They took the light over their garage that had the dome lights that go down to their driveway, angled them straight at my house. They sit in their driveway with their headlights on for twenty minutes at a time, just sitting there with their light shining on my house. There's seven to there's about seven unrelated people living in a one bit, one family home. And they continue to do this while they have also taken down their light over their garage that could be told to be angled down to the their, their road um, driveway and put up a much larger light. So now there is four lights on all night, every single night. I have asked for the police to drive up the road. They told me that they cannot drive up the road um, until unless they go and talk with them specifically. I finally did get an officer to ask me to call up the front desk and have an officer drive up the road and they did do that. But I will show you what I have to deal with on a nightly basis. This is my home at eleven o'clock at night. Every single night, all night long. This is my home at eleven o'clock at night. All night, every single night. I go out if I, when them sitting them in their driveway for twenty minutes, I go out and with my camera, they yell across the street that they're going to get me arrested for, for um, annoying them or whatever, because I'm taking a picture of them attacking me. This is seven men invading my home every single night. I am a female veteran living alone. I should not be afraid every night in my own home. This is, you can tell by the shadow. This is, I have truck visor, sun blocking truck visor that people use in their trucks to keep the sun out of their trucks blocking inside my window. That is my shadow on my at eleven o'clock at night on my house from their lights across the street. Every single night. Police told me that there's nothing they can do because there's no ordinances in place, but there's ordinances in place for all um, highway lights, city lights, town lights, everything, anything on a town building, a city building. There is light trespass laws that it can only be so far from the light itself. It cannot trespass on anybody's property. It cannot trespass across my property, through my house, through my blinds. This is inside of my living room with the lights coming through my blinds. Every single night, all night long. And the police tell me there's absolutely nothing they can do because there's no ordinances in place, but there's ordinances in place for every other type of light except for residential. And I'm the only one in the neighborhood that has to deal with this. So cone, um, pole lights, the ones that are glass all the way around. They have, can absolutely have those for lighting their property, but they should have blackout plates to prevent the light from their light going on to other people's property. And they definitely do not need to take down a light that they could be told angled down to their driveway to put up a much bigger, much brighter light that can't be angled down to their driveway. Respectfully request ordinances for light trespass and light pollution because not only that, on top of what I have to deal with on a daily basis, there, I'm in a direct line of one of the, I get planes and helicopters over my house all the time, every day. So I could just imagine what this is doing to them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, any clarifying questions from the council? Councillor Borlon?
Uh, just to double verify, can you just uh, confirm uh, your address again?
Mine is one twelve Laurel Wood Road. This, these people are one thirteen. Seven unrelated people living in a single family room on top of that.
Yep. My next clarified question is, um, how long has this been going on?
They've been living there for about twelve months. It's been going on since eleven months, every night, all night long. They took down the light over the garage that they could be told to put down towards their driveway approximately two, three weeks ago to put up a bigger, brighter light. And all four of them were on all night, every single night. And just to make sure that they might not get home in time, the one over their garage is set to go on at four forty every single day during the day. So all four of them actually today before I came on here, all four of them are on and it was still light outside.
And my, my last clarified question, how many hours uh, are, is the light uh, that you're uh, you know, currently uh, your, your issue with light? How many hours are you dealing with this?
Every night, all night long from four forty until eight o'clock in the morning.
Thank you for your time.
All night, every single night. And not only that, they, they, they also park on the grass too. So I'll have three or four cars crossed. They just sit there with their high beams hitting my house. This is, this is coming through, this is my living room. Sorry. That is on their grass parked up. That's just sitting in, coming in my, coming in my house.
Thank you for clarifying for me.
Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Councillor Westville, do you have a question?
Yes, are any of these um, municipal streetlights or are they privately owned?
Every single one of them are on their house and on their property.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I apologize you have to put up with this.
It's been every single, and the previous residents talked to these people and told them to do it because a previous resident left their pole light all night long. And when I asked him not to, he held a baseball bat to my head. So for the three years I've lived here, I've had to deal with it.
All right. Well, we're very sorry to hear that. Thank you, um, Kelly, um, for your time. We'll definitely look into that and do, do whatever we can. Next on the list, we have Catherine Pratt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I just need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Catherine Pratt and I live at seventy five Front Street in Noank. Mayor Melendez and members of the town council. Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to suggest a few changes in the town council rules of procedure. My remarks are drawn from a longer letter I have submitted for inclusion in the record of tonight's meeting. And for more detailed proposals, I have submitted to the temporary rules and procedures committee on which all councillors have been copied. For comparison, I reviewed the town council rules of procedure for thirteen other Connecticut municipalities with a council manager form of government. And I can say with confidence that Groton's rules deviate significantly from the norm. First, the rules of procedure of all town councils reviewed allow councillors to place matters directly on the agenda for regular council meetings. This is at odds with Groton's rule seven C, under which only items reported favorably by a committee majority may appear on the agenda. As our local legislators, councillors should have direct access to their own meeting agenda. I respectfully suggest that rule seven C be amended to allow all town councillors to place items directly on the agenda for regular meetings by simply providing a request to the town clerk within some number of days of the agenda being posted, as is done in other towns. Additionally, no other rules reviewed require a committee to report favorably on an item for the, or the item to be considered by the council further. Under the quicksand of Groton's rule seven C, items not recommended by a committee majority go directly to the legislative graveyard. I again respectfully suggest deleting the first sentence of existing rule seven C. Finally, the town councils of all other towns reviewed conduct the business of the town in regular council meetings. In contrast, the Groton Town Council conducts most of its business as a standing committee of the whole. This non-standard tail wags the dog process in which the committee of the whole serves as the council's major decision-making venue limits the effectiveness of public comment, comment, because by the time of the next monthly citizens petition, the outcome of the matter at hand has often already been decided at the committee level. The council's swift approval of the data center host municipality fee agreement with Godspace is a case in point. This issue was discussed in the committee of the whole, then ratified in just fifteen days. Incongruously, the first available citizens petition was the same day the matter was scheduled for a final vote. The opportunity for citizens to exercise their constitutionally protected right to petition and address their government should occur at a meaningful point in town council proceedings. Furthermore, the data center proposal is an issue of major public concern. Under the host agreement, three hundred eighty acres of commercial real estate would be exempt from property taxation for twenty to thirty years. Godspace appears to be unstable and environmental impacts and other questions have not been publicly addressed. For example, the Flanders Road site is serviced by Eversource. Does Godspace plan to use Eversource for this site in the city of Groton's municipal electric utility for the Route one seventeen site? How will power be delivered to Flanders Road? Had this consequential proposal been referred to a special committee instead of rushed through the busy committee of the whole, the council might have had a fuller picture before committing the town to a project that deserves a closer look. To correct some of these systemic problems, I respectfully suggest that the committee of the whole be eliminated from rule nine A as a standing committee and that the council conduct the business before it at regular meetings twice a month with citizens petitions at both, as is done in other towns. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the council? All right, I'm not seeing any. Oh, councillor Borlon?
Uh, sorry, um, just a clarifying question. Uh, the rule that you, I might have, I just wondered if you could just restate the rule change that you had recommended?
Yes, it's rule. Well, there were several of them. They are more specifically stated in the letter that I submitted. Um, but it, the first, I think the ma- the one you're talking about is Groton's rule seven C.
That's definitely.
Yeah. And then the other one I mentioned was nine A.
Nine A. And that's all followed up in the uh, email that you had sent?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
All right. Thank you for all the speakers coming out. Just to check real quick if we have anybody else here who is not signed up and would like to speak. I'm not seeing anyone else. All right. So I'll move on to responses to citizens petitions, uh, comments and concerns. Councillor Franco?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and speaking with us tonight. I am I really feel for um, Ms. Poulsen with her like, um, the light pollution situation that she's dealing with. If there's a way that possibly she can email the town manager so we can get her contact information other than her just her address, maybe we could be able to speak to her by phone would be good. Um, I would also like to just state that I know that there's been, you know, some comments about executive session, but I think it's a necessity. And that when we're deciding on how to negotiate a strategy um, and how to, how the town should move forward legally and with a strategy of some sort, I don't think that should be in the public light for the um, for the opposing party to know what we're going to be coming forward within litigation with. So I think that executive session is a necessary, necessary um, part of our council. Um, especially when it's having to do with um, contracts and land acquisitions of sorts. Um, and I would also like to respond to that. I know some people would like to see some things on our agenda and these things take time. Um, there are numerous items on our referral list that are, that are waiting to get onto our agenda. It's, we have a lot of business to do. And our meetings seem to go very, very long. Um, Um. Our last meeting was, we did not get out until twelve forty A M. I mean, these meetings, we are trying to get the business done, but they take a long time. Um. I personally, I think I, I, since we've been back in office. Um. And been sworn in again, uh, I think I have at the minimum, I, I don't even know right now, but there's five referrals. And it's going to take time for my referrals to get onto the agenda and we'd all like things to happen very quickly. But we are dealing with a lot of other business that's ahead of it. So I appreciate what you're saying. Um. And thank you for coming out and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselordelone.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. It's, I think, the most important part of the agenda. Uh, unfortunately, it only happens once a month, but when it does, it's, it's very important. Um, I look forward to looking at more uh information regarding the light issue that a constituent had had addressed as well as um the different folks that spoke regarding um the borough's property and having a town green. Um, all of that is also uh definitely something that I will, you know, I've taken notes and I'm definitely following. Um, the gentleman that spoke tonight about um the artist in regards to the indigenous uh people's uh artwork that used to be displayed at the uh Groton Public Library. Uh, this has come up uh at one point when we were putting in the Groton sale. And as I had stated then, I had brought up and had done some research, um, actually before um the gentleman um that originally owned the piece, I had found it at the Seaport and then had found that he had passed. And um now I'm, I'm realizing um it went to the nephew. So this is great that people are on that and it's definitely got my support in the sense of uh seeing what we can do. I think it's important when we bring in art, artifacts into our town that we maintain them. And um it definitely was a, uh, sad to see that it was not properly maintained and left. Um. Uh, I know Mrs. Tillman and, and Van Brown spoke today. It was great to see Van on camera tonight. That means uh you're feeling good, Van. So it was great to see you actually on the camera tonight. Uh, I know sometimes uh you're not able to. And so thank you for reaching out uh to Mrs. Kowalski. I hear your concerns. And again, I, I've taken a lot of notes and um I appreciate everyone who takes the time and the willingness to come out and speak openly under citizens petition. It is the, the most uh important part of our agenda and I respectfully take my notes and, and listen with all ears. So again, thank you for taking that time.
Okay, seeing no other hands. Move on to the consent calendar. Make a motion to move the consent calendar consisting of January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two special meeting minutes. January fourth, twenty-twenty-two minutes, various appointments and reappointments, November twenty-twenty-one. And the special trust fund contributions from January, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordelone in discussion. Counsel Franco?
Yes, on our. Wait a minute. I had it. And now I'm, there's a right up by, hold on, let me find the right page and then I'll tell you where I'm at. Is on our page fifteen. And it's the last paragraph and it talks about what Rachel Franco stated. And then it goes into the last sentence and I'm not exactly sure what it's referring to in relation to this, this paragraph. Um.
I'll take a look at it, uh, Counsel Franco. Sometimes things get goofy and in, in transit, so I'll take a look.
Okay, thank you. It's just the last sentence could probably be removed. I'm not even sure if it needs to be.
Makes any sense at all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Substances? That carries unanimously nine to zero to zero. Onto communications and reports. Counselor McBride?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'll try to make this brief. Uh, received numerous forms of communication uh from various constituents throughout uh last week or so. Uh, some budget comments from individuals regarding uh the increases in maintaining the mill rate. Uh, also support for the Groton family farm as we've all received. Also information on Claude Chester tonight, but also previously some comments on how we should utilize that property, that property, property. Also discuss, had some discussions with people regarding land that's available adjacent to senior center. And also uh some land that's directly across from town hall. Some individuals mentioned to me that that's for sale as well. My, my point there is I think we as a council need to make sure we take a holistic approach to all of this downtown area that we're talking about because it is a lot of, a lot of information we're digesting. Uh, also received some comments regarding concerns over the data center and Godspace. And lastly, had some discussions uh with Robert Frank from the Groton Housing Authority about some items and particularly maybe uh making some recommendations on, on some board members. So uh, that's about all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
Yes, um, I too uh received the same communications as Counselor McBride. Did the tour last night for the police department with amongst several of other counselors, RTM members. Um, very informative meeting. And I attended a TVCCA meeting last week before our council meeting. They're reporting, um, the energy assistance program is still taking applications. Currently, they have over seven thousand applications, but they still can take more. Um. They uh continue to comply with the vaccine and testing requirements per the governor's office and the Office of Early Childhood Development um in their early childhood centers. Uh, they've completed their first draft of the continuing added CO, uh, COO P, their operation plans for um review for, by a consultant. And they're meeting with the talked about the state legislator reconvening on February ninth. And adjourned on May fourth. They're working closely about advocating uh with the community. They did talk about the buildings on Central Avenue and trying to work out plans and I believe Mr. Birch has been working with them on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Baumgartner?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Melendez. I received the same communications as uh counselors. Um, Parker, as well as Counsel McBride. Um, today obviously marks uh Black History Month. Uh, Counselor Parker read the proclamation, uh, which I read at today's incredible Black History Month celebration. Um, just a big uh thank you to uh so many uh town staff who have worked behind the scenes in the last couple of weeks. Uh, really making today's event so special, uh, just to name a few. And I'm so sorry if I miss any names, but uh Cindy Olson, uh Jerry Locken, Mark Berry, um, you know, at Parks and Recreation for um, you know, really giving us a, a huge hand today. Um, again, behind the scenes at uh today's Black History Month celebration, flag raising. A big thank you again to um John Burt, uh, our town manager for um, really supporting uh Counselordelone's uh wonderful idea to, to host this event. Um, and uh so many others, uh, you know, um, you know, we had today, uh, uh you know, our new human resources director, Anish Green. Um, Chief Asaro come out. It was just a really great showing of, of town staff support. So really want to uh, thank our town staff for supporting uh our council's efforts to highlight Black History Month. Um. Counselordelone, what, what a job you did emceeing uh today's celebration. Um, Counselor Parker, representing N double A C P, wearing multiple hats, coming out. Uh, our mayor with our proclamation, uh, just really proud of our town uh for, and in our community members uh for, and all the counselors that attended, RTM members, Board of Ed. It was just a wonderful showing of, of individuals uh this evening. And I'm, I'm just so proud to be a part of this community, to serve uh in our town in elected government and just want to thank all those who attended. I would encourage those uh who didn't uh attend today's event, um, our Black History Month flag raising, um, to uh watch it on uh GMTV's YouTube channel. Uh, Sean Greeley, Sean Greeley graciously uh recorded the entire event, so you can watch it on demand forever. Um, so I'm again so proud of our town. And um, you know, let's make this month really special. Thanks again, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'll go now. Um, certainly just want to echo everything Counsel Baumgartner just said. Um. You know, just doubly thank everyone from the D E I for all the work that they put in. And also uh Counselordelone for the idea for the event. Um, I also went on the tour for the police department. Thank you to the chief and the captains and the deputy uh chief for uh giving us a tour of their facilities. Um, it was my first time doing that, so it was very enlightening. And uh, I think that's all I have. Counsel Westphal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say I've, I've heard from a number of people as everybody else has as well. And I'm actually real excited to hear a lot of excitement from those that came in front of us today to talk about the town green. And you know, the possibility of, of making that open space accessible to everyone and how it would really benefit the town and kind of give us a great uh look to the rest of the state. I think that's awesome. Um, I also heard a lot of different comments after the um, announcement of Blue Lotus last week. Um, and I've heard a lot of concern um, because of uh their involvement and how it's going to affect the mediation. I understand that we are going to be going forward on mediation. Um, some of the current concerns that have been brought to my attention are that that mediation may be interrupted by the introduction of Blue Lotus, which from my perspective um, should not be allowed um until something more formal comes about. Unless something more formal has come up since last week. So I just want to explain that I have heard many, many uh concerns regarding this new development with Blue Lotus. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselordelone.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, I'd just like to say that I, I, I received the same communications as already stated, so along with the concerns um with the Mystic Oral School to properties being the Actley property behind as far, as well as the Boroughs Field and many other communications that were already stated. First and foremost, I'd like to open up and state, um, you know, this weekend was a hard, uh hard week, um, losing a dear friend, a Fitch High School graduate um, that I sir, um, happened to be a member of a track team. I'm sure Counsel Melendez can share those concerns as being, you know, former runner. As a runner of cross-country indoor and outdoor track, I spent many long nights. And to this day, as I run to the high school and pick up my own children, I think, how did I ever do all of this at eleven o'clock and twelve o'clock hour where the bus comes in and kicks up? Um, drops off students. But I say this to say, we lost a dear friend. A Fitch High School graduate, Timothy Pierce, was a shot putter at Fitch High School who lost his life at the age of forty. A graduate of the class of ninety-nine, a track captain and football captain, an honors student at Fitch who went on to school for engineering at Michigan who then had an interest in aerospace and then pursued a career to come back home to be with his family here in Groton. He picked a job working um at EB, serving our country in a different way. And to attend those services to his family, longtime Groton residents, a military dependent family. Um, and I just, um, to see people like Josh Seals and Stephen Taylor, former track runners uh show up uh and speak on behalf. So I just want to say that uh it, it, you know, touched me and um you know, definitely something. We lost a dear friend and, and, and graduate of Fitch uh high school. Um, with that today, um, also I attended, not today, I attended the, also the tours, as was stated, at the police department, looking at um the facility. Um. And I was, I just want to thank the town staff, John Burt, Parks and Rec, Jerry Larkin, Becca from the library who made these wonderful pins. She said, what would you like? I had a vision. She made them. Um, and everyone that came together to pull off the event today. Went longer than I anticipated. Uh, we stacked the agenda, obviously, in the midst of COVID to make sure that we had a, a nice turnout. But for the first annual kickoff to Black History Month, as a person who has grown up here, raised here, graduated from here and raising my two children of color in this town, I was honored today to stand up there and see that flag raised. Bruce Jones, Counselor Jones, who showed well, uh, Counselor Melendez, Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Parker. Um, that, that, you know, in any other that maybe watched from home that took time to attend today. It was very, very moving. Um, Natalie Brasdel, our keynote speaker, who's the comptroller, who's the um highest pretty much the highest ranking African-American female in the state of Connecticut to come down to Groton and speak, was an absolute honor. To hear young voices like Ariana Stanberry, a Fitch High School graduate, a Berkeley um School of Music graduate speak about her experiences here, to have the rotten town police come up, Chief Asaro even join in and also read at the end when we were reading um African-American uh history folks that maybe weren't as well, as well known. And that was an honor. And I think today it sent a message of the need for cultural, you know, uh that diversity and inclusion is so important. The D E I committee, uh, the senior center. Um, the shuttle spreading from Fitch, when I asked, um, ten or fifteen students had come down, they, they brought a bus, dropped students off and brought them back. On, the list goes on. And I hope this is um going to continue for many things to come. Senator Summers attended along with um Representative Chris Connolly. Um, and I might be missing more. Um, but again, to me, it was a, a vision that I had had. Last year, we read the proclamation towards the end of the month, we got it in. And today we read it on the first day of Black History Month and we have a celebration. And um I look for this event to grow and many more events in our town in the coming years. Um, to hear students say and speak tonight that they've never seen anything like that, it made me feel so proud because that's how I felt. So on behalf of everybody in the town of Groton and all the, the folks who participated and, and came to speak tonight to a science professor um from UConn who spoke to a student of the UConn every point. Um. I, I'm just really thankful of how it turned out. Thank you to Betsy Kousher for, to, for again, uh typing up a wonderful proclamation that was read. Counsel Baumgartner reading it and Juliette Parker are, are, are brought in town council reading that as well. Um. The flag was raised. We, we sang um the Black National Anthem and closed with amazing grace. And again, if you have not attended, as Counselor Baumgartner had stated, it is online. And thank you obviously to a very important person who, uh, Mr. Greeley for, uh, Sean, for capturing this digitally. And um last I checked, my son who came home from fencing, say, stated that, Mom, it's up. So um, it's up online and it can be shared and can be viewed and um it was very organic and I couldn't be more proud. And thank you to Counsel Melendez for, when I approached you, uh, you, you, you heard me, you, you heard what I believed and we moved forward. And uh to the town manager who we barely could get a flag, but we had backup plans. I ordered two, he ordered two. We made it happen and I couldn't be any more proud. So again, thank you so much and um I look forward to years to come. Thanks. And I'm excited to be a part of that history.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I had a correspondences and communications related to the following. And how the town council should consider the town council rules. The Mystic Planter slash Fountain and the future, future maintenance and solutions to it. Uh, the light trespass pollution, state regulations and how that could possibly be. The light trespass pollution state regulations and how that could possibly be brought on to local ordinance. Claude Chester and future usage, Burroughs Family Farm and the future usage. Ackley Property, which is located next to the Senior Center Library. And across from the Town Hall. Potential request for acquiring it and usage. Contacted about SB Butler, things are moving over there, probably potentially moving out. The Mystic Education Center and the current status. My refusal, a request to Counselor Westerville and somebody's personal opinions. A boat located on High Street, they're located on a sidewalk, which is in Mystic. I spoke with Mr. Allen and Chris Regan. And Chris Regan from the Mystic Village. Where the Native American statue is being housed at the moment and is in his possession. The one that used to be at the public library and I'm awaiting this topic to come onto the council's agenda. For my referral. We received a correspondence from Captain B, which alerted us that there's potentially another winter storm likely to come in, rolling in to Groton on Thursday into Friday. We were a ground housing authority tenants meeting information and the situation that they're having. I tuned into the GMTV and watched the Black History Month flag raising today. Attended the Rules Committee meeting. And we are slowly, slowly moving forward. Went on a tour with the Groton Town Police Department. Along with animal control facility and it was very informative and insightful. Went on a ride along with the Josh Brown from the Public Works Department during the snowstorm on Town Plow. And I learned some great information related to storm prepping and how this town preps and. How our town staff take care of our community during the, you know, extremely difficult conditions. And I'd like to thank the Groton Police Department as well as Public Works. And it has been said that this council was going to reach out to the community about mask mandates and opinions. And I was curious as to how that is going to happen and in what capacity. And what is the criteria for removing the mandate? And is this going to be the council's decision or is it going to be left to the town manager? Since the mandate was imposed under different circumstances than previously had been done and there are people in our community that are now asking about our mandate. And. How we're going to go forward. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kessiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received many of the various other communications already brought up by other counselors. I received information that the Oslo Street hazardous roadway situation. That I brought up earlier will be taken up by the Traffic Authority on February 17. I also attended the tour at the Town of Groton Police Department yesterday. Thank you to the chief, the deputy chief and the captains for that really informational. Informational tour of the Police Department facilities. Today I was able to attend the Black History Month event in the city of Groton. Thank you to Mayor Hedrick and the city for that educational event. And thank you to Counselor Parker for your beautiful speech. And letting us know about all the members of our community that inspired you. And I was able to tune into the town event as well on GMTV. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy week. I did on Friday attended. And volunteered at the food bank in the city at St. John's run by the United Way and we. Distributed food to over 300 families, so it really indicates there's still a huge need. In our community for, for food, but I have found this to be extremely rewarding thing to do every month. It's on the last Friday of the month and we get to give out a lot of turkeys and a lot of other food elements. So it's been really pretty, pretty cool thing to do. I've been talking with Chief Osaro and the Traffic Authority, we've been working with. Some goes to Groton Open Space requests about several crosswalks for safety. Coming out of their properties now that their properties have expanded even more. More and more people using them and going across the street. So we've been in communication on trying to. Deal with some of those issues. I've received all the same emails and communications that the other counselors have. Last night we visited the animal shelter and the police station. We had an excellent tour by Chief Osaro. One of the things that I just want to thank the residents of the city is the amount of food that people contribute to the animal shelter. They are every day, people are bringing food to the animal shelter for cat food and dog food. I think along with pet toys and blankets and other things, but it's amazing. The food is all, it's just, it just keeps coming in all the time. So a big thank you to all of that. And attended two Black History Month events today, did the one in the city at noon time. And that was a very nice event and then did the one in the afternoon. At Town Hall, I just want to commend Counselor Board lawn for just the huge amount of work that was evident that she put into this. And a thank you to all the town staff. It was extremely well. Run and it just was very informative and something that I knew nothing about is I had never heard of the Black National Anthem. And got to hear the singer sing it and I had no idea that we had a Black National Anthem, so that was. Enlightening and something kind of neat to see. I think that covers all of my topics, but a big thank you to Portia for all of the work that she did, so.
Thank you. Thank you for all your communications. So we are moving on to. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the representative town meeting will be joining the Board of Education and the town council in a meeting tomorrow. A YouTube or having a Zoom meeting to, to review the proposed Board of Education budget. I don't know how many questions or comments will be. Allowed in that. I really don't know the, really the standard. For this, this is a different way of doing things. Usually have sit down meeting. So it'll be, you know, we'll see how it goes. I know that the Chairman Watson believes this will be about a half an hour meeting. So if you're worried about that, on the. Ninth of February, the RTM will have their regular meeting. That will be also a Zoom meeting. I know that the moderator, moderator Russ is very interested in. Having in-person meetings, a hybrid if possible, for those that do, still don't want to meet in person, so she's. In communication with the town manager regarding that. That's all I have and for the town council report tomorrow. Again, you have the joint meeting with the Board of Ed and RTM to review the board. Proposed budget and then on the third of February, so Wednesday. At five o'clock, you'll be touring the town hall and I hope you stop by the town clerk's office. I'll show you where all the hard work goes. You'll enjoy seeing everything, I'm sure. That's it.
Thank you for that. Town manager.
Good evening. Oh, right. Does Counsel Franco's hands up? Did she have a head? There was left up. Okay, um, first of all, thanks. We had a great FOIA training before the council meeting last week. Thanks to Tom Hennick for putting that on and for Betsy, to the town clerk for arranging that. It was very good training, I thought. Black History Month flag racing, flag raising, that was great today. Good job to everyone. Good job. Portia on the lineup of speakers. I thought it was fantastic. Good job. Everybody that participated was wonderful. So that was really good. I've already put out a link to the video on Facebook, on our Facebook as well as our website, so that is out there for people to follow. The mentioning, Counsel Franco mentioned the boat in High Street. That wasn't, that has been in progress. Chief Osaro sent a letter prior to us getting this email. He gave them two weeks to remove the boat, then we have to tag it for 24 hours and then we can remove it. So that is in progress. He was watching some of the meeting earlier. I don't know if he still is, but the light pollution, he is going to send an officer. He's looking into it himself and sending someone over to look at the light pollution this evening and he's going to report back to me. Roseanne Katuski had the question about whether we've received anything else from Blue Lotus. We have not received anything, so. We're still mostly, mostly in the dark. We didn't even receive the comments they sent to the paper, so the paper received more than we did. Paula Han from the Catherine Fosna Art Gallery reached out to Mayor Melendez, myself, Mayor Passerell from New London and Mayor Hedrick. They're looking to do a, because of us being sister cities with. With Kingston, they are looking to do a Jamaican art exhibit and want us to work with them on doing that, so that'll be exciting. Thanks to Public Works and the Police Department for how they handled the storm and went about as well as it could have, you know, there's always glitches, but they did a fantastic job. One big piece of news that's developing with the Riverview Avenue and knowing with the rocks that the person placed. Our guys have been doing a lot of research. They actually were digging up the site and found the foundation of a building. It switches where we think the line is a bit, so we might have two of the parking spots that we think we own. We're sending our attorney, sending their attorney a letter that while we figure the rest of this out, we want the rocks removed from those couples spots, so. But we'll see how this plays out. Oh, you know, I should have more information soon. And I did want to get some feedback for the, I'm getting quite a bit of emails on the mask mandate. Emails and calls. And some fun comments towards me. I just want to say, no, I'm the only one that can remove it. Town council doesn't have the authority, but however. You know, I enacted it, you know, somewhat at your request. I agreed with it, but I wanted to get current input on whether you want to continue it or not.
Counsel Franco.
Thank you. I just was wondering if on Zoom we can remove chats. I have been in other Zoom meetings where they do not have the chat window and for FOIA. It's, we're in our meeting and we're not supposed to have communications with anybody from the outside unless it's. Publicly in our meeting and the chat is basically presenting an issue, I think.
I know that that could be set up when you're setting the meeting up. You could set that, so I'll talk to Lisa about that.
Thank you. And I just want to just clarify something. And if I'm not supposed to be discussing this now, this is, that's absolutely fine. Please just tell me so. The Blue Lotus. What we hear is that they are. Going to like wrestler is selling to them, but nothing is finalized and.
Not until after that due diligence period, correct?
Because as we know, with a lot of things that have happened, things fall through before anything is, could even be finalized, so I. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it's not even finalized. We, we just heard this so far.
Right. And to reiterate, as I mentioned, after the executive session last week, the goal remains to, to try to exit the development agreement.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Board lawn.
Thank you. As far as the coastal access to the town manager and the new findings that you just presented. Is there any way to have that as a formal agenda item? Where you'll present so that we can talk about what those exact findings are. I know that we had a. Public input session, but I think now having this new information would warrant another one. With coastal access being very near and dear to me. And these new findings, it changes a lot of what's been said and I think the council needs to have an open dialogue on those findings. So I just wanted to ask. You know, I think at some point it should be an agenda item and then followed by a chance for the community to have community input again, based on those new findings. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, yeah, and that was planned. We do plan to do that.
In regards to Blue Lotus. I do think that it would be very important as we look at the RFP process, John, if we could add the notes that. We would consider or my consideration, or if it's not already in there based on the RFP process that I read after reading the one with. The Mystic Oral School. That there's nothing in there that states. If there was a change of hands, how to renegotiate and what this RFP process would look like. I think this is very important. To consider and I think it would allow, if we have it in there, to allow for proper deliberation as well as. Possibility to back out or, or move forward with an agreement, but I think when it changes hands in new name, I think that should change an automatic reset. So I know we have not finished the RFP process and one of my referrals that were sent forward was to. Start to consider a working group or a group to start to gather all this information. Currently, my question is, is with the Blue Lotus, is there anything in there stating if the current developer changes hands, are we still under contract for our current RFP agreement and development?
Well, we have to study it. If it was completely, it, it gets complicated because they're completely being bought out and absorbed. It's not quite like, you know, it's a big company, doesn't exist on its own separately. So it's not like they transferred it to a different entity, but this is something I want. Once we get official information, then our, then our attorneys can dig into it further, so I wouldn't want to speak further on it at this point.
Right. I, I think that would be great to talk about because a lot of our agreements was in use of the Pratt Building. I mean, obviously it's state owned property. And so is our Pratt agreement with that building just going to roll over to Blue Lotus or where do we stand with that?
Again, we've not received anything. It's impossible to say at this point.
Right. So after I'm reading, I just wanted to, you know, make sure moving forward and one of my requests would be to make sure that our RFP process and development agreement. Has something stated in there if there was a change of hands in developer. That we as a council have the stake to go back around the drawing table on certain things. Granted, this is a state property and there's not much we can do in that aspect. But our development agreement with the Pratt Building and things, so. I just would like to add that to the notes to talk about that as another option and thank you for your report. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would love.
Oh, they cut out there. I'm not hearing anything.
Counselor Baumgartner, we can't hear you. You faded out. If you can hear us.
Public comment period. But, you know, I certainly believe we should be discussing this, continuing to discuss this important issue. Transparently here in our council in an open and transparent manner. To provide answers to a lot of the questions we have. I do have a question with respect to. Just agreements in general and perhaps this is something that we should refer as an agenda item, but. I know, for example, one of the town properties that we are looking to sell. There was already a change of hands and it just seems like there's a recurring theme where. It's sort of the norm where we engage with a potential developer or a. You know, someone who is looking to make use of a town property and then over time. There is a change of ownership or a change of hands and now we've seen that obviously with the Mystic Oral School. Although it is a state owned property, it just seems as if this is something that is likely to happen with really any property that we dispose of. So I would strongly encourage us in the future, if we were to, you know, sign these development or to. Have any development agreement with any developer to develop town property in the future. We really need to clearly spell that out in our, in our agreements. Additionally, you know, there have been a lot of questions just about kind of the. The openness of these discussions and, and you know, it's just so important that we have these discussions in a. A very frank and open manner. Part of the reason why I voted against going into executives. Session to even discuss the missile. Session to even discuss the Mystic Mystic Oral School, um just as counselors Franco, I'm sorry, counselors. Bordelone and Westerveld supported. Um so with that, um just want to thank um Counsel Board along for. For bringing up the point she just made and um stand by them. Thank you.
I have made note of them. Thank you.
Counsel Board along.
Um I just want to ask John Burt, um just another question in my notes here that I happened to, sorry, I did, I failed to to say that. Looking at this, this new development with coastal access property under your discussion with that, would this warrant a reopening of the Fort Rachel? Coastal access based on the fact that, you know, um the majority of the council at the time. Uh did not give the consensus to move forward with some of the things that I had brought up about moving forward with Fort Rachel. Not to say that there was anything necessarily of discrepancy there, but to move forward, looking at other properties in that area. And now that we have this, another property that we are in possession of, that we actually may have other rights to or not. It, would it be appropriate? Uh do you feel as the town manager that we should look at Fort Rachel again as coastal access that had come up tonight?
Right. Uh nothing will have changed in the circumstances of Fort Rachel. What the question was, was whether the council wanted to pursue. Well, let me take care. What, basically court action to try to get further access, so nothing, there's no new evidence. We can't find anything else, so. It would just be whether you want to change your mind on that.
Right. I guess what I guess my court action wasn't in my, my, my direct mind, but more in the aspect that we just looked. My proposal was looking at more of the um, the properties in that area and really surveying um all of the. Any type of um land um surveillance in that area at the time.
What's your point of order?
This isn't a simple question. This is getting into a debate of a topic that I know some people that would definitely like to hear kind of information that's being discussed. And it's not on our agenda.
And just to point out, we did look at surrounding properties. That's not gonna change anything. There's nothing else we can think of to do further at this point, so it all comes down to whether there's a current evidence you want to proceed.
Um to clarify that, I'm asking the town manager a direct question based on the response of coastal access as its entirety. And asking if, you know, there is a reason to uh look at other things because we found out more, so I. Do think it is pertinent, but um I respect Counsel Franco's response, but I could also send a referral as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baumgartner.
Yes, that seemed like a question to me, but that's here, there nor there. Um just a second question to the town manager. As Counselor Franco meant, I'm sorry, Counselor Bordelone mentioned. You know, coastal access has been something that has been brought up in the, in previous councils and we have not discussed it sort of publicly. Uh with our new council would very much be interested in doing so, especially with respect to uh the proposed land swap in knowing. You know, I, I think it's no secret. I've vocalized a lot of concerns just from the get go about that land swap and obviously. Uh the town manager and the town has received and the attorneys have received new information since then. Uh so I think it's in very important that we do um meet as a council to discuss. You know, that, that proposed land swap and um find a solution. I think that solution continues to be preserving the coastal access that we already have there, um and that we've had for decades. Additionally, um you know, as Counsel, Counselor Bordelone had mentioned, you know, we have. Discussed ad nauseam, uh the Fort Rachel, um you know, coastal access. Uh as well as just Mystic Coastal Access as a whole, and I would very much support. Having a more robust discussion in the future, again, um to, you know, to. Uh with our new council to discuss those issues, so maybe, you know, both of those issues can kind of go hand in hand and we can tackle both of them. So we don't really waste any time, um but that's something I'm very much supportive of and um, you know, hope the council can support as well. Thank you.
A point of clarification, uh Mister uh Mayor Melendez. With this current agenda, um I know that we are looking at rules to things. Where under this would be appropriate to do a, a referral if not tonight, where on this.
Other business?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Counsel McBride.
Thank you, Mayor Melendez. Uh just a couple of comments. Uh John Burt, you asked comments regarding mask mandate, and I just wanted to give my comments to you that. Uh I believe if the numbers continue to move downward as, as everything indicates and as other municipalities. Continue to remove the mask mandate, I would be supportive of that as well, if it continues to go in the direction, so you had asked for that, I just want to give that feedback. And then I have one other question for you in regards to uh your report. You mentioned the ARPA funds and the long-term recovery committee. I just wanted a little clarification on. The timing of, of how that's gonna move forward and, and who's on that long-term recovery committee. I just wasn't sure. So any, any information you could provide would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Right now, the public input um process, stage two is ongoing for the, how to spend the American Rescue Plan Act funds. That will wrap up very, uh within the next two weeks. There'll be, the next long-term recovery committee is on February sixteenth where there'll be an update. We've pretty much locked in um most of the paperwork at this point that we need. For, for instance, before we turn over any money, there's gotta be an agreement. That if they misuse it or do anything, you know, that agreement for certain documents be provided to us. If they misuse anything, they have to pay us back, that type of thing. We're pretty much finished all that stuff up. In terms of who's on it, there's uh. Three or four council members, uh counselors Bordelone, um Baumgartner, Mayor Melendez is the chair. I feel like there's a, I feel like I'm missing a council, but maybe not. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm missing one, but um they're, oh, sorry.
Manager Burt, I think you had the RTM moderator on there as well.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I haven't finished the list yet. Yeah, we, yeah, we have the uh, the moderator, we have uh several town staff, we have um. Mayor Hedrick, we have his economic development director, we, um there's two citizen spots, there's. Oh, there's some, there's a couple others. There's quite, it's a pretty robust group though. And then they only make recommendations. Ultimately, the town council has to approve anything and then the RTM following that.
Thank you.
Counsel Jones. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um I just want to echo, um support the same basic comments that um Counsel McBride had on. On the mass mandate. Um if numbers keep coming down, it's, it's fine to, to, to let that go. I had a question on the Greater Groton site. I took the, um and I encourage everybody to go in there and use the, the tool where you can sort of do it. Sample budget. Um my question was why? And it may be, there's no reset button or something. Why was the amount that's given in the sample numbers larger than the actual budget number?
Because it was reflecting everything we received in the first round of public input.
Okay. So I found that trying to make it go to the eight point six million, you had to bring everything down. To get it go below there, then have to bring it back up. So it just seemed like it should have a cap that says, um, you know, it stops it.
Otherwise, we would have been making decisions on where to cap them at ourselves, so we wanted to put everybody's ideas in there.
Oh, okay. All right. So it's just a little confusing when you do it. Match to the eight point six million. It's at, set at twelve million and you have to kind of knock everything down to six million and then build it back up again, but. That makes sense. Yeah, I just encourage people to go do it. It's interesting and you can kind of start to move the numbers around and see where the. His choices that you have to make and it's pretty obvious when you do it, so.
And, you know, in a really fantastic intro video, which is me. I refuse to watch that.
No, no, no. Thank you. That's good stuff. That's all. All right. Great. Thank you.
Counsel Cassirin.
Uh Mister Burt, since I am certainly not an expert in health, um what is legislate indicating to you about the mask mandate?
I uh was just texting with Steve Mansfield. Basically, yeah, we're the only ones around that he knows of that has it. It doesn't do, doesn't, he doesn't believe it does any good other than it's a visual, it's kind of a reminder to take things seriously. That's basically what it is at this point. It's not. Really got much of a health benefit at this point from his perspective, so that's what he's passed on. It shows we take it seriously. My preference and from the feedback I'm getting, I'm, I lean towards removing it soon. I kind of, I'd like to see the numbers on Thursday when they come out. Late Thursday, but I, I lean towards removing it quickly.
I am comfortable deferring to the health experts, so thank you.
Counsel Franco.
Thank you. And it comes to a mask mandate, but my question previously was. Our community was told that the council will be reaching out to the public for input. And I don't know exactly where that came from regarding the mask mandate. And now I'm seeing this on social media that people are like, well, when are they gonna reach out to us or how are they gonna do it? And I'm, I don't have answers for people. So my question is, how are we handling this? After something that's been communicated to the public that we were looking for, you know, we were gonna reach out to them. So that's my question, and I would also follow up with, when we get to committee reports, asking the mayor that question as well. And I did not put my input in when it came to the mask mandate, because I am not a health official, so. I will defer to the health officials and leave it to the town manager, because he is in those meetings. And he's the one getting all the information directly from them, and I am not in those meetings, so I will defer to him with whatever decision he chooses. Thank you.
Counsel Parker.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I believe it was a discussion about having put out a survey. To get the public's opinion about the mask mon- mandate, if I'm remembering correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Ma- uh Mister Mayor or Mister Burt. Um I thought we were gonna try to do a survey just to get, get the public opinion. And I'm in agreement about waiting for Ledge Light to give us clear direction. And if we do do this and people still feel uncomfortable, if I can request that we still do a hybrid, thank you.
Just to mention, we are required to do a hybrid through the end of April at a minimum.
Thank you.
Counsel Bordelone.
Thank you. In regards to the mask mandate, I'm a strong believer in masks as a, as a not so long ago cancer survivor. I've been wearing masks now for three years through cancer and COVID and instructed by medical staff to wear such to keep down. My transmission of communicable diseases, colds, viruses. It has significantly changed that. I encourage that we do take the, the lead role from uh the Ledge Light Health District. But again, what was our numbers, John, at the height when we put the mask mandate date on in place and what are our numbers at the last report?
I don't have the initial numbers with me. Um I can tell you two reports ago was eleven hundred cases. It's down to uh. Like nine, nine fifty-ish approximately, somewhere in that ballpark. And, and to me, the, the bigger thing is hospital beds. That's the, what I, I find is the, the more important thing.
So I will stand behind masks uh in public places like grocery stores and things where people are in close quarters. Obviously not in outside areas per se, unless it's your choice. Um I think as the numbers go down, that's an indication that something is, is working. And we do not want to act carelessly and have them come back up. I can respect the fact that other towns surrounding us do not have them, and there's a lot of things that other towns surrounding us do not do, but that should not be our driver. I think if the numbers are showing a decline, I think we should keep that in our, our, our front view as it's, it, it. As a positive, um so I will not be in support of releasing the mask mandate. Thank you.
I think, after hearing the input, I think what I'm gonna do, for one thing, I'm gonna ask hospital for an update on how they're doing on available beds. Cause again, that, that's really more the relevant thing at this point, but what I might be, what we might be able to do is use the Greater Groton. Website to actually do a poll through that way. I'll talk to uh staff there and see if we get some public input that way. Once I get that input, um I probably will bring it back to the council, though I will make a decision on that input, based on that input.
All right. And I don't, to answer Counsel Franco's question briefly. Uh I believe the, the idea, I believe you're referring to when, when the manager put out the video and he was saying that we were gonna ask for input. Um I believe the idea and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, that it was gonna be on the uh, the uh. The Greater Grind website, um so that people should look out for that, definitely. Okay, on to department heads. Do we have any?
We do not.
Okay. Committee reports. Uh I have nothing from committee of the whole. Just, uh just comment uh for, cause we have some new chairs here. First uh time doing a committee reports. Typically, if you don't. Have not had a meeting in the last month, you just say no meeting, no report. Um so on to personnel and appointments, Chair Baumgartner.
Wait a minute.
Counsel Franco.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
When are we going to find out our um, all the committees and liaisons and when are you gonna make that announcement?
So, um, so those are.
Town council meeting. I'm sorry. It's usually at a town council meeting that they're done.
Right. So, um, there is a list. The, the town manager and myself have been going through. We're trying to figure out which ones are going through personal appointments, which ones are mayor. Uh appointees and um when we have that, that, we think we have it all fleshed out. I think I have volunteers for most of these things, um but at the end of the day, most of these are going to go through personal appointments. They meet on the third Tuesday of the, the uh month, so. Uh all these announce, all these nominees should be in by next week and then they can go through personal appointments on the third Tuesday. And then come back to us on the first of uh March for final approval.
Thank you.
Counsel Parker.
As a follow-up to Counsel Franco's questions, TVCCA is by appointment by the mayor. And that has to be done before the next meeting. Thank you, which is at the end of this month.
Okay, was that one of the ones that I appointed at uh last meeting? At the beginning, Counsel Parker.
I was that, I was not at the meeting. At the beginning of that meeting.
Okay, I did a couple that I knew specifically were the mayor.
Because that also has to have a letter to TVCCA.
Okay, so Manager Burt, are, are you comfortable uh with the assessment that that is uh, an official mayor appointment? And, and does not have to go through personal appointments, because I could just do that appointment right now.
I think he's checking.
Okay.
I think that's my, that's my understanding and I'm, I'm just speaking as Chair of uh Personal Appointments.
Okay, so um I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Um I will appoint Juliet Parker to be our representative for TVCCA. And if that's how it's been done in the past, um I'm comfortable with that. If we gotta do something else, then then. We can change that in the future. Clerk McCoutter.
I, I've just jumped in here and say that, you know, in the past, when is the past? So. How councils have done this in the past is you, 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 everybody knows what. Committees there are and anyone who's interested in serving on a committee, let's, let's everybody know, and so. There wasn't any problem until a couple of years ago, or not a couple, a few years ago. And then it became going to the committee, you know, appointments committee to, to counselors. It really, you know, if you have an interest in. See, the seat uh organization, the bus transportation system. By all means, volunteer, you know, it really was that way. You know, these, all these positions are very important and they need. People that are willing to serve, so um that's how it was done in, in the most recent past, different, but in the past, that's how. Our council handled it. And I just went through the town council mayor disappointed them and it was no big deal.
Okay. Thank you for that um bit of history unprecedented. Let me see where we are. All right. Personal appointments, Chair Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh the town council's personnel and appointments committee met on Tuesday, January eighteenth at five thirty. The Town Council's Personnel and Appointments Committee met on Tuesday, January eighteenth at five thirty. Counselors present, myself, Counsel McBride and Counsel Westervelt, great group to work with. We approved the following nominations that will be, I believe we will be voting on in our consent calendar this evening. Solely reappointments, Mr. Ed Stevins, Zoning Board of Appeals, Anti-Coding, Run Housing Authority, Robert Frank, Crown Housing Authority. Just J. Kane, Selfish Commission, Craig Tobias, Selfish Commission, and Catherine Brady, Library Board. All those appointments were moved unanimously. Nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Rules Committee Chair Parker.
Yes, the Temporary Rules Committee met on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six PM. And also on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, myself, Counsel Franco, Counsel Bordelone, as well as Town Manager Burt. And several others who were in attendance watching. Counselor Baumgartner, as was at the January thirteenth meeting. We are continuing our sessions on going rule by rule. I am respectfully asking again, the council, as I mentioned before, to submit their concerns via email. So that all three of us can look at it and have it in hand. Thank you to those who have submitted. Thank you. And again, please email us. Our next meeting will be February fifteenth at seven PM. And if you can get those concerns to us in a timely manner. Thank you.
Counsel Bordelone.
Just on the rules, it would be helpful if other counselors too did submit, as Counsel Parker had stated, or if you'd like to attend. You can't necessarily vote or make decisions, but you're welcome, I mean, my understanding, you're welcome to speak. And would be acknowledged like any committee, to throw an input on the items as we go along. Since this is coming back to the council as a whole, any work that we do there will also make it more effective when it comes to the council. So as a person on the committee, it would be very helpful if, if any other councils would like to attend. So I welcome that. Thank you.
And, and again, as I previously stated, please email us your concerns. It's better to have it in writing so that it's in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Public Safety Chair McBride.
Thank you, Mayor Melendez. No referrals received. The meetings were held and no report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a break now?
Yes. Five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at eight thirty-five.
Recording stopped.
Back from recess at eight thirty seven. Onto new business. Town attorney selection process can be found on page twenty-three.
I can read that.
Thank you.
Town attorney selection process, whereas section eight point two point one of the two thousand nine Groton Town Charter requires the town council to appoint attorney no later than one hundred and twenty days after general town election and whereas the town council last bid out town attorney services in twenty eighteen. And whereas the town council deems it prudent to occasionally bid out the town attorney services to ensure the best value and fit for the town's needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council does direct the town managers to solicit bids for town attorney services using the standard town request for proposals process followed in two thousand eighteen with the review slash interview committee members to include the town manager, the town's purchasing agent, a human resources representative, a planning department representative, a town council member, a finance assessment representative, town tax collector, and a public works representative. I so move.
Second.
Second Jones.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Jones. Counsel Westerville.
I'd like to point out while when we started, when we first brought this up a few weeks ago, there was a comment made that if anyone has had negative comments about the sitting town attorney, that they would be excluded or barred from sitting on that committee. Now, I'm not asking to do that. However, I just also want to point out that that kind of cuts both ways because if anyone is so enamored by the job that the town attorney has done, then they cannot be unbiased as well. And I think that ought to be taken into consideration for anyone who's going to be on that sitting committee, on that committee. Thank you.
Manager Burr.
Just to mention it, what it really is, is if you've basically said you would not consider them, that's really the key.
I respect that. I. Okay, thank you.
You can't have a pre, you can't have a predisposed outcome before going into it because that would get us into, would get us into legal issues.
So I'm assuming that there are people who have stated that they would not consider that town attorney again.
I don't know if anyone has on the council.
Thank you.
Oh, Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, I can, I very much appreciate Counsel Westervelt for asking that question. Just I think it's important to state on the record whether or not that has actually been done, whether any counselor has emphatically stated as such. But with that said, I just want to note, you know, this passed unanimously by our council. Very much looking forward to reviewing, you know, the various interviews as a result of town managers, town manager Bert's commitment to televise the interviews, which I think is very important as he would know very intimately. You know, that was something that was done while he was interviewing for town manager. And I just think for, for purposes of transparency, I think it's, you know, important that all taxpayers and residents of Groton and our council as the authority to has the ability to review those proceedings. So I very much look forward to supporting this resolution this evening and nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Uh, thank you. I think, you know, to the point of with Mr. Counsel Westervelt I stated, it would seem to me that's why I'm not really in favor of only one counselor being on this committee. I think in some aspects, one would think or gather that you'd want, as stated, if there is such, a counselor that is opposed and one that's kind of definitely has maybe expressed more for, and that would be a balancing act. And I think that would be more transparent and a more fair representation to sit. You would want both the opposing and the other side. That is a true democracy and way of vetting. And so if we were going to use that as an example or a statement, I think we should live by that. With that, I will support this to move forward, but I definitely am not in support of one counselor on this group. I am more in favor of two or three. I think is a fair representation. I think it should be constructive of counselors as stated for or people, maybe people who are spoken out against as well as some new counselors, as well as some counselors that have served on the council with the attorney already in the past. So those are my discrepancies. I think bringing on a person or counselor that is selected to be on this. On the RTM, it's a different level from my experience, but on the council, working with the attorneys, let it be that you have a fair or an unfair experience or a neutral experience. I think that council it serves and that committee should have served on the council with this current attorney. Um, and to give the fair representation. So that's, that's where I stand on this. And for the talk of that, I'm not in support of one counselor, but I would like to move this along. So the support was not there for any other number. Thank you.
Counsel Parker?
So I, we discussed this, we've talked about this for quite a while regarding this. I believe the overall, the last vote was that we're just going to move forward with one council council, one town counselor member. My out of myself and Counsel Franco, probably myself being the longest one here. I've been probably with this attorney both as a RTM member and as a town counselor. So the same level of service that they're providing us that they do at the same time. So I'm okay with moving forward with one town, one town counselor member being on board. Because we're not going to be able to pick one if we put somebody that's against and in favor of. And we are trying not to go down the route of being sued. So I would greatly appreciate if we can just move this forward. Thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Uh, thank you. I can share, you know, Counsel Parker's response. I do think it is important though, on the RTM, from my experience, we did not or were never privy to an executive session. And I think that is a lot of a different, that's the level of difference of serving on the council that you don't get on the RTM. So for with that, I do think the council that does serve or is selected, I'm open to whoever, but I think it should be a person that has experienced the attorney in executive session as well as outside of an executive session. I think that is very important, considering the time that a counselor may have served only recently. It really doesn't give the backstory for the previous executive session. So that is why I think it would be great to have definitely someone who's experienced that and by no means am I volunteering myself. But I think it'd be great to have someone who's had the experience as well as someone new, maybe on board from the RTM that maybe didn't have the bias from an executive session. That was my direction for making sure that there was at least more than one counselor on that committee. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Borlon, is that another hand or?
Yeah, I can support this motion on the floor, but I'd like to make an amended motion basically as written to add two counselors to this committee.
I'll second that one.
Just for this, I'll wait to speak, sorry.
You're good.
For this, as stated, I think this would open up the door to allow to make sure that we have a representation of somebody new, someone who's experienced that. And I think it would properly represent the council. It would allow for any of the, the comments that were made to make sure if someone was for or against, you kind of can wash that out, neutralize it and move forward in a more transparent fashion. That is why in the original statement I suggested to, and tonight I again urge my counselors to get behind this and move towards two councils, counselors on this committee. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for the committee as read in the original motion, but just with two town counselors. Is that the amended motion?
Um, yes, Mayor Melendez, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm seeing no discussion, so I'll call for a vote on the amended motion of two town counselors with the rest of the committee as written in the original motion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Baumgartner.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, that carries three in favor. Baumgartner.
Sorry, sorry to really think you need to do a voice, a vote, a roll call because I didn't hear everybody vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Aye.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counsel Cassiri?
No.
Counsel Franco?
Nay.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel McBride?
Nay.
Counsel Parker?
Nay.
Counsel Westervelt? You're muted.
Aye.
And Counsel Melendez will be a nay.
Uh, did you, you missing Counsel Baumgartner?
I think he went second.
He, he was the second person to vote.
I missed that one. Okay.
Okay, uh, so we are back to the original motion with one town counselor.
Can you announce the results, please?
Uh, three in favor, Counsel Westervelt, Baumgartner, Borlon, six opposed, Melendez, Cassiri, Jones, McBride, Franco, Parker, none abstaining. I'll call for a vote on the original motion. On, uh, let me go roll call again. Counsel Borlon?
Aye.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counsel Cassiri?
Aye.
Counsel Franco?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel McBride?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
Counsel Westervelt?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, and Counsel Melendez will be aye. That should pass. Eight in favor, one opposed, Westervelt, none abstaining. Onto biz, new business ten-two, Groton Ambulance Lease Extension can be found on page twenty-four. I recommend a resolution approving a lease extension with Groton Ambulance. Whereas the town of Groton and Groton Ambulance Association Incorporated entered into a renewal of lease agreement in twenty eighteen for the purpose of Groton Ambulance operating an ambulance service on real property owned by the town at two seventeen Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut. And whereas the term of the twenty eighteen lease expired on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the parties mutually desire to renew the twenty eighteen lease and to extend the term through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Now there be, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves a lease extension for property at two seventeen Newtown Road for a term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two with Groton Ambulance Association Incorporated with a yearly lease amount of one dollar. So moved.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. Yes, for the record, I'm in full support of the Groton Ambulance questions that were discussed. Now, the city does not contribute anything to the town fees and they do cover that area. The town also covers, I know through our taxes, but nothing additional to support. So I do feel that the cost was moved from a dollar and had moved up and now we're moving it back down in this new amendment, which was not the original amount that was put, set forward at the last budget. With that, we do give the, the, the building at a, a very below fair market rate. They do do a lot of repairs. The town also does contribute. Other municipalities and other areas Mystic Ambulance owns their own building. Um, so that, for that, I cannot support the dollar amount of a dollar for a lease for the year. And that would be my reasoning for not supporting it. Full support of the ambulance and all that they do. I, but I think the number was going up for a reason to help offset the costs of repairs that are not covered by the Groton Ambulance and things like that. So that is my, that's my rationale. Thank you.
Counsel Parker?
As a city resident within the town of Groton, with the city being a subdivision, we pay taxes to the town of Groton for property taxes as well as other taxes. Are we saying that we want the city of Groton to pay additional, we want the city residents to pay additional money for services that are already being rendered? And if so, I do not agree with that because it's already within our taxes to do this. And as previously stated at the last meeting, they do do a lot of maintenance at that building. That costs more than what they're getting out of from the town. So it's a split cost on some things and other things they've done a lot of repairs on. Thank you.
Okay. See no other discussion. I'll call for a vote. On favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, Borlon.
Abstentions? That carries eight in favor, one opposed, Borlon, none abstaining. Okay, onto the committee of the whole regular meeting schedule twenty twenty-two. Change can be found on page twenty-five. Let me get there. I recommend a resolution approving the revised twenty twenty-two Town Council Committee of the Whole's first regular meeting date of November. Be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the revision of the November twenty twenty-two first regular meeting date for the Town Council Committee of the Whole as Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty-two. So moved.
Second, Cassiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Cassiri. Any discussion? Counsel Borlon?
Can you just state for the record as to why that's happening for the public?
Yes, um, I believe that was for an, for an election. Mr. Burr, am I correct?
Correct. In the original day we were going to move it to, there's no rooms available, no camera space available. So in order to broadcast it, we needed to move it to a different day.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine to zero to zero.
Uh, Mayor Melendez, my mic didn't go off at that time, but I wasn't, I didn't unmute. I apologize.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, on to State of Connecticut Office of Policy Management's Justice Assistance Grant can be found on page twenty-seven. I recommend, you'll read it. Thank you.
I recommend a resolution authorizing the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistance Grant. Whereas the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management is providing the town of Groton Police Department with a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to assist with violent crime prevention and public safety improvements. And whereas the grant is funded by the Federal Justice Assistance Formula Grant, JAG program, and its primary purpose is to assist local governments with preventing violent crime and improving public safety. And whereas the two thousand twenty-two JAG grant must address one or more of the following purpose areas. Reduce and prevent violent crime and gun violence. Reduce and prevent gang and group violence. Support and expand community policing strategies to improve police response to domestic violence and sexual assault crime. And to improve police response to mentally ill persons. And whereas the Groton Town Police Department plans to utilize the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistant Grant, JAG, to purchase a patrol vehicle for better response to crimes of violence and mental health crisis incidents. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council authorized as town manager John Burr to apply for and accept the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistance Grant and the anticipated total of, total grant amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Any discussion? Counsel McBride?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that throughout our discussion, the one thing we did find out was this was not a purchase of a new patrol vehicle. This was a replacement of a vehicle that had been destroyed in some accident that we didn't receive funding for. So just want to make sure everyone is aware. It's not a new vehicle. It's replacing an existing vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, per the discussion before, I obviously am fully supportive of the, the grant. But as it was stated and read, there's multiple areas where this grant could be applied. And so my feelings on where it should be applied, it's not for actually having the grant for full clarification. Um, I think with bringing on a new counselor to help with the police department, my question to John Burr, could this money be applied to the social worker based on the guidelines that were given from my understanding?
I'd want to look at it a little closer. I think the thing to keep in mind is we're going to have to spend the money on the vehicle anyway. So it's kind of, you take it from one place or you take it from another. So we, we have to have the vehicles. So otherwise we'd have to go a different route to pay for it.
Right. I just, and I can respect that. But what I read and I looked up at other towns, some were using it towards those areas, or my understanding. So I think sometimes when we apply for grants, we also have to own where we're applying them. And I think this type of grant that is the word stated to me, I feel more comfortable wrapping around the idea of supporting, taking the grant that's directly impacting constituents and individuals in crisis. And so for that, I'm just in disagreement as to where it should be applied. And I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I'm in full support of this as when I read the grant outline, it did say to improve police response to domestic violence, sexual assault crime and and mental illness persons. So response and response time to these people was part of the the grant. And I think having a vehicle to respond to them fits into it perfectly. So I'm absolutely in favor of this. Thank you very much. And I'm glad that they brought this forward to us. Thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Sorry, I didn't finish my whole note here. As I also have written in another page, it's our obligation, like it is to have a police department, to make sure we have vehicles as a town. Per this grant, I see a grant to enhance the services that we're already supposed to re, already, you know, supply and have. And so with that, that again is where I see this as an enhancement to directly impact. Vehicles should be part of our budget. It should be something that we're, if we're supporting the police department in its entirety, as we should, we should be funding those vehicles and making plans to make sure that those are happening in a timely manner. Grants to me are extra things that overlay that we can't achieve in the funding from our town. And I think this should go directly into some type of program to help domestic violence and individuals in our community. And again, that is why I will not be supporting it in, in the way that it is written. Thank you.
Counsel McBride?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that a JAG grant is specifically used for enforcement operations. So I'm not sure if we could use it for some of the other items that are being discussed. It's specifically for enforcement operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Um, can you just clarify, Counselor Melendez, what it states here in the paper or John? Because it, as it stated, enforcement, yes, but it defines other ways it can be applied.
Mr. Burr?
Vehicle is just one segment of that, but it states here that it can be used to directly enhance and support. And if you go further online in the state website, you can actually look at the full grants in its entirety. As it states here, support and expand community policing strategies. That would be interventions for juvenile. That is a, a more holistic approach with direct engagement with community outreach. Vehicles is on here and then we can choose to support it in that capacity. But what I am a firm believer, as most people know, in the budget season, looking at outside resources is making sure we're directly impacting the individual. A vehicle to me is something, is obligation from a town. And these are ways to grow those direct community outreach programs. And that's how I read it. So, John, do you have any more on that or?
I, I think it's probably pretty robust. I wouldn't want to specify any certain thing. I would like to though, just, it was mentioned, we should take care of the vehicles as our responsibility. This happened mid-budget cycle. So, you know, it's something we had to do now. We couldn't budget for it because we don't keep extra cars around. So I just wanted to make sure people are clear on that.
Yeah. So the line here that says reduce and prevent gang and group violence, vehicles are part of a response that we naturally have to do to get there. But ways that we can reduce and prevent gang and group violence is more outbreak sessions, group thing, prevention, money into the community, uh, community policing aspect in the community center to have more community policing outreach, more conversation with the cops programs and things like that. So that's kind of what I envisioned this twenty-five dollars for. Um, and it states here pretty, pretty openly in here, support and expand community police and strategies and you know, violent crimes. There's ways to have advocacy groups and people on hand to help people that are, been victims of violent crimes. Um, and that's one area in our town that I feel we do not have enough of is the support services for, for those programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. On favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm an abstention on this.
Okay, that carries.
And again, for the record, abstention because of the direction of where the twenty-five dollars is going, not for the grant in its entirety.
Thank you. Uh, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Borlon. Onto Connecticut Greenway designation can be found on page twenty-eight. I recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager to submit an endorsement for the Greenway nomination to the Connecticut Greenways Council. Whereas the Crosstown Trail and Tri-Town Trail Greenways will provide benefits to the community, including defining natural features such as waterways connecting existing protected areas, provide access to the outdoors. In addition, it will expand recreation opportunities and encourage alternative transportation. And whereas the town of Groton's twenty sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development recommends the development of townwide and intertown network of trails and furthermore recommends and encourages integrated and linked open space to reduce the pattern of fragmentation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council supports the concept of working to enhance and encourage open space connections by endorsing the nomination of the Crosstown Trail and Tri-Town Trail Greenways and be it further resolved that the Groton Town Council authorizes the town manager or is designated to submit on behalf of the town of Groton, an endorsement for the Greenway nomination for the Connecticut Greenways Council. So moved.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. On favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Onto Mystic Construction LLC escrow agreement, Gravel Street Pump Station. I recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager to sign an escrow agreement with Mystic Construction LLC to accept and use funds for the purpose of replacing wet well ventilation and older control equipment on the roof of the Gravel Street Pump Station. Whereas the owner of the downtown Mystic Central Hall Building Mystic Construction LLC desires that the town replaces wet well ventilation and older control equipment located on the roof of the Gravel Street Pump Station. And whereas Mystic Construction And whereas Mystic Construction LLC is willing to pay for the design, construction and inspection of the equipment. And whereas Mystic Construction LLC wishes to enter into an escrow agreement and provide the town with the funds required to perform the work. Now therefore be resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign the escrow agreement between the Town of Groton and Mystic Construction LLC and accept and use the funds to replace the ventilation and odor control equipment. So moved.
Okay, Franco.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri. Any discussion? Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, I have a question for the town manager, just for educational purposes. Um, I, I voted for, um, this resolution at our last meeting or a motion, I should say, at our last meeting. And I will be, uh, again to this evening. Um, I just have a question with respect to kind of, um, the process by which we established to uh, create, you know, the escrow account and what have you. Uh, can you just kind of give, um, the council a very, very brief synopsis of what a, say, private citizen, a business or a, um, property owner would have to go through to work with the town to, uh, pay for or to, uh, pay to, you know, make a, an improvement to a town, uh, asset or, um, contribute towards, I mean, this is the first time I, I believe I've ever approved something like this. So if you can just update us on that process again, very brief, I very, very much appreciate it.
Sure. And I encourage all people to, uh, feel free to partner up with us to pay for things. Um,
I can second that.
You know, typically it would start with something like it did in this instance, uh, where they reached, where they reached out to Public Works. Um, Greg had some dialogue back and forth with them on what they were wanting. They could kind of, they laid out the, uh, basic parameters. Then Greg, uh, worked with our town attorneys to write the agreement. Now Cindy Landry, the finance director, of course, will set up the, the account. The money will be deposited before we do anything. Uh, our staff will put out, you know, create the bid. Put it, I think they've already been working on it, but they'll put the bid out. If the bids came back higher than the amount that's in the account, then they would return to them to see if they wanted to, uh, to move forward and put in further funds. Assuming that doesn't happen though, that it goes over, then we proceed as normal. We run the project. The funds here in our control, we take out the funds needed to complete the project. Anything left over goes back to the, the, uh, partner, the private partner.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Counsel Bordelone?
Thank you. Um, I concur with all of this. I think that's great with the partnership and all the protections are in place, uh, Manager Bird, because we would not be making any moves to disassemble or re- uh, deconstruct anything that's currently working until funds were acquired and, and, and confirmed.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine to zero to zero. Okay. Onto CDBG twenty twenty-two Program Income Reuse Plan can be found on page thirty. I recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing to authorize a program income reuse plan for the small cities block grant application for housing rehabilitation. Whereas the Town of Groton is applying for funds under Housing Rehabilitation Program, the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program pursuant to the, to Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended. And whereas the Town of Groton will expend those funds if awarded pursuant to Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, the Code of Federal Regulations and the Assistance Agreement. And whereas the town has the, has program income funds that may be used as a match for future CDBG grants. And whereas the town has drafted a revised program income reuse plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to schedule a public hearing for March first, twenty twenty-two for purposes of authorizing a small cities block grant housing rehabilitation program income reuse plan. So moved.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Any discussion? Counsel Bordelone?
Thank you. Uh, Manager Bird, can you explain exactly what this Title One grant or an example of what this could do to enhance our town?
I believe this would be sorry, I have trouble with my video. Uh, it, it's our typical CDBG programs. For instance, we've done, uh, things for the, uh, Groton Housing Authority. Um, for other, uh, developments, uh, this just allows us to, uh, to, you know, stretch our funds a little further. I'm not an expert on this though. John Reiner and staff will be at the public hearing to explain in detail.
Would, would this allow for to address concerns of uh, in quality, uh, inequality in the access of low-income housing?
Definitely. I would want to have, uh, the actual staff that work with the grant though here to discuss further.
Yeah, because I, I'm in full support. I do think that, you know, looking at this, I mean, we, I hope, you know, that we, we apply for this, but, um, is there a direction of where we're going to use these funds if awarded?
Not at this time. Again, there'll be a presentation when we have the public hearing.
So this is just a blanket, um, application process with no plan in place to, um, allow these, uh, lot these funds to any particular development that's mine as of yet.
For this is just a policy. It, right. It's not an application or anything.
Thank you for clarifying for me.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, um, since, uh, taking over the reins from Mayor Melendez as Chair of Personal and Appointments, um, just gotten a little bit more, um, uh, interested in, um, some of our boards and commissions and studying up on what each board and commission does. And I know, uh, one standing, um, Boarding Commission or, uh, Board we do have is the Community Development Advisory Committee. And just curious as to what their role would be in sort of crafting this policy. Obviously, uh, this process as you outlined this evening.
And I was not involved in this process. I would want town staff. I mean, that, these are all great questions, but I would save them for when we actually have a presentation in the public hearing.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel McBride?
Yeah, just to, just to clarify and give some feedback, my understanding from the meeting we had was this was going to allow us to use program income revenue that is, that has, that is left on the sideline right now. And we're going to be able to use it in the future for a grant match for CDBG grant. Correct. I think that's part of the discussion. So it's
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. So it's a good use of prior funds for future match. Thanks.
Counsel Bordelone?
Um, thank you. Um, how much funds are left over that we're trying to match? I guess is my question.
Again, th- these are really questions that should either be asked at the Cow or at the public hearing. I don't have these answers. I'm not involved in this. So, you know, we can compile them and ask John to, to, uh, answer them later.
Unfortunately, sometimes questions come up that are organic nature like, you know, as Counselor McBride stated, matching, you know, funds that are left over. And so it triggers the mind to think. So unfortunately, it's, it is unfortunate that we're not able to answer these questions tonight and everything can't be confined to one time to answer them. So I think sometimes it is important to have town staff available if needed to answer those questions because questions may come up later. And they should not be just kind of dismissed or moved along until the hearing. Um, because I'm voting on this tonight and this is a new thing that has come before me. Um, so I'm curious as to how much funds are left over that we're trying to match. Um, if we cannot answer that, then I cannot vote on this tonight. Thank you.
And that's certainly your prerogative. Uh, if you think of questions after the original cow, feel free to send them and we can provide the answers. I'm not going to have all the different staff though attend both the cow when they were supposed to answer them as well as the council meetings.
Just to follow up with that, some of the questions may happen in real time. So, you know, as co- cap- conversation is organic in nature and not premeditated as it shouldn't be. It may be a response from another counselor's thoughts or processes on something that trigger a thought or memory or an idea or a question that you should be able to ask in real time. And so mine is naturally organic or else I would have sent it on ahead of time with all due respect. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Clerk McCouch wants to jump in here.
Just wanted to remind count the council that this is setting the public hearing. Counselor Bordelone, if you want to send your questions, all right, I can write it down and I'll make sure that, that it's given to, uh, the staff at, uh, that's handling this grant. Is that okay?
That'd be great. Thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
I'd like to make a motion to move the question to vote.
Second?
All right. Counsel McBride makes a motion, uh, to move the question seconded by, uh, Counsel Parker. That is not debatable. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Me, Franco, Bordelone, Baumgartner.
I'm an A as well.
Yep, I have you. Abstentions? Okay, so that's four in favor. Melendez, Westerville, Jones, McBride.
And Parker.
Five in favor, Parker. Uh, and four opposed, Casiri, Franco, Bordelone, Baumgartner. And is, uh, Clerk McCouch is moving questions, uh, two thirds or?
Yes, yes, it is. Two thirds.
Okay, so that fails. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Was that a poser abstention?
I'm abstaining for lack of information. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have passing eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention Bordelone. Onto emergen- emergency management performance grant uh, can be found on page thirty-one. I recommend a resolution authorizing application for an emergency management performance grant. Whereas the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, is to provide states with the ability to assist state, local, territorial and tribal governments in preparing for all hazards as authorized by the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. And whereas the Town of Groton is eligible to receive state and federal grant funds through the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. And whereas the state requires that the governing body for each municipality issue a resolution authorizing the chief executive officer to act on behalf of the municipality and governing body. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council authorizes town manager John Bird to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program and to accept the grant in the anticipated amount of nineteen thousand three hundred dollars. So moved.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Onto Appointment of Town Auditor can be found on page thirty-two. I recommend a resolution appointing the town auditor. Whereas the Connecticut state law requires municipalities to appoint an independent auditor to account, verify and correct the town's accounting records. And whereas the town's contract with the firm Clifton Larson Allen, CLA of West Hartford expired upon completion of the FYE twenty twenty-one Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And whereas the staff is satisfied with the work performed by Clifton Larson Allen and feels their knowledge of the Town of Groton and its financial practices is desirable. And whereas if hired, Clifton Larson Allen has stated the first year of the contract, FYE twenty twenty-two will be a five percent increase and three percent increase the remaining two years, FYE twenty twenty-three and FYE twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be resolved that the firm of Clifton Larson Allen, CLA is hereby appointed as the auditor to the Town of Groton for the three fiscal years, FYE twenty twenty-two through FYE twenty twenty-four. With the town to have the option of extending that selection and contract for an additional two fiscal years. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Sorry, Counsel Bordelone?
No, no worries. Um, uh, John, I just, uh, met Tom Manager Bird. Uh, how long has this auditor been with us?
I don't have the cow pack in front of me, but I do know that they've had extensive turnover recently that to the point where they're almost a new firm. Um, so there's all new faces with them, but I think it's only been couple of years since the, uh, it maybe a three-year contract.
Right. And then there's already increases. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries eight in favor, one opposed Bordelone, zero abstaining. All right. Onto other business. Uh, we have our open agenda item review. Um, and the other thing is if counselors want to make referrals, this would be the appropriate time. Counsel Bordelone?
Yeah, um, I'd like to make a referral to look at, um, um, Fort Rachel and coastal access.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, I enthusiastically support that referral. Um, I would also, um, like to make a referral. I, um, I, just from, um, discussions I've had with various counselors, um, in the last few months, I believe there is a desire, um, to, um, amongst our rings to explore, um, you know, establishing some form of a, an online open budget, uh, data portal um, that can be accessed, um, by taxpayers and residents of our community, uh, to review, um, town spending, uh, to review, you know, um, just kind of an open, um, book for um, all to access in terms of data for our community, uh, financial. Um, I know there are many communities throughout our state that have, um, worked with, actually today, we, we welcomed our, uh, state comptroller, uh, Natalie Braswell, who was appointed by Governor Ned Lamont, uh, to fill the vacancy of, um, of comptroller Kevin Lembo, who, um, recently resigned. And, um, their office has worked, uh, hand in hand with several municipalities, um, to provide a data portal for, um, you know, residents in their respective communities to access. Uh, so they can, uh, have financial information at their fingertips. Um, and, uh, they can review it without ever having to issue, uh, an FOI. So that is something I, I would like us or council to discuss. There is an interest to, to do that. And perhaps then we can, uh, move forward and, and have, having discussions with, um, you know, or, um, say the, uh, Office of Comptroller that we could, uh, partner with that could provide the infrastructure to do this. As they've done with so many other communities. So that's something I'm, I'm very much, um, supportive of. Uh, I don't want to speak for other counselors, but I know there are several on this council who have voiced their support for something similar to that. So I just wanted to make the referral. But, uh, just quickly on, uh, Counselor Bordelone's referral, uh, not only do I, I again enthusiastically support that referral, but I strongly, uh, believe that we should, um, invite, uh, a citizen who has been, uh, who has spoken, who has been outspoken about the importance of preserving coastal access, coastal access along, uh, the Mystic River. And that would be, uh, Mr. Dick Fitzgerald, who has written us, uh, extensively since I first joined a council. Mr. Dick Fitzgerald, who has written us extensively since I first joined a council back in early two thousand and eighteen. And I think it would behoove us to bring him in, so him in, bring him in on the record to discuss this important issue. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Westerville.
Yes, I also would like to make a referral regarding coastal access. And I agree with Councilor Bumgarner that Mr. Fitzgerald is a very important person in this whole arena, but also I visited with a neighbor on Park Place in particular. And it is apparent that some of the residents on Park Place have encroached on Town Right Way by placing pavers and basically changing the layout of the road. They've also, it appears to have blocked an existing easement that would allow public access down to the shoreline of the Mystic River that goes between two of the properties. I strongly recommend that Park Place be surveyed in its entirety and also to include that easement to the waterfront. Thank you.
Council Franco.
Thank you. I am here. We have a lot of items on our referral list. It's very robust. And as I listen to all of us and how we want to bring things forward, I think it's great. I said, but, but in my mind, I'm thinking, what is the priority? Like, I would, I would personally like to see the Groton Long Point Bridge come very quickly. If it's possible, I don't know where we are in the actual process, but I would like it to come quickly because that bridge is rated poor. And there have been bridge issues of other bridges that are rated poor, and it just made me think, we need to take care of this because there's no there's no other exit out of Groton Long Point really that's safe. And if something really happens to this bridge. So my thought is when it comes to that bridge, we need to start moving. And if we could possibly, I know other things are important, but that's one is I think a very big priority for infrastructure. I also would like it that if we bring forward, if I don't know how to do it, but we bring forward some of the empty schools, possibly Claude Chester. And then we have the Burrows. And I don't know if we, we're going to talk about Ackley's property. I'm not sure, but we should also bring forward in with that, the short-term, the sports field task force. Because they also have some renderings of some things that they brought up for Claude Chester. So might give you a visual on some things, or we could ask them to help us with some of these visuals. Also, on February ninth, I had made a referral to the Public Safety Committee regarding Quonix Bridge Fire Department and Discussion of Pilot Funding and Training Center. And it hasn't been taken up since February of twenty twenty-one. And I would like the referral to be reissued for the new safety committee. So I just want to put that out there. I also made one of the referrals for revitalization of downtown Groton, which doesn't have any details on it. And I I'd like that one to come to the councils for a discussion, and I don't think it's going to be a huge discussion, just to let you know. I'm asking for some kind of other committee to come out of that is what I'm asking for, as well as the vacant property program. If that could come to the council, we could probably have a very short discussion on it. And what I'm asking for is that to go to the Economic Development Committee for their input. So I don't think it would be a long discussion topic on our agenda if it's at all possible. And that's it for now, but thank you. And I know it's very robust. So when, when people are saying that it's hard to see what they want on our agenda, I understand it, but we're looking at this. There are things that have been there for a long time and, and some of it, the work just needs to be like, some people need to finish up some of their research and their work on it so that it's ready to come forward. And some of it, if it has anything that we can get money from the federal government with infrastructure, if that comes through, we might want to work on some of those to where we're shovel ready if money is going to be available. Just some ideas. Thank you.
Council Bordelon.
I just wanted to say I could support the and coastal access on the area that Council Westerville had brought up because I had her concerns in that area as well. And so it would be great to have a visual. I believe at one point I asked about that under the last council. It didn't really move very far. I believe a constituent on that road, Mrs. Foley, was talking about, and I had asked at a meeting about shrubs and such that were, where is our property line? Because at the time it was issued that people would just back down and signs may be put up. And I'd asked about that property. So this would be great to definitely visit. In some ways with Council Franco, I do think as we move forward with the tasks with the sports fields and the center and the Burrows property and the old Claude Chester, we really do need a master plan and visual thought. Kind of looking at the community center, you know, we're kind of just piecemealing it. And when we piecemeal, then we never finish the full direction. I think to really visualize what's going to go there, which I'm in full support of that open area at the Burrows Field. I think we really need to have the working meetings and part of the town council agenda and discussion for the council to really talk about what we envision there. I mean, folks keep talking. It was brought up in many different platforms by folks about the Ackley property. But that's never come before the council as an idea or thought to date. But I think what, what is it that we still need to accomplish? And the driver for that incorporated with sports fields really would be important before making all of these decisions. And that plan has not come before us. So again, I think it's, it's a great concept, but I do, I encourage that we move forward from an economic standpoint, development standpoint is coming up, what is the vision and have the public discussion with the neighbors in that area before we start talking about the Ackley property and the Claude Chester and the Burrows. I think now the interest is spiking, but yet we have nothing on our agenda talking about the community's needs and people wanting agenda items. This is the time where we should be having those community forums and discussion while we're kind of planning our agendas. It's really easy to add a simple discussion of the area of question. So I encourage a, my referral also would incorporate, encompass having a plan as well as having a community discussion with invites to the community to speak on what they visualize for that neighborhood for the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bumgarner.
Yes, I would just note, you know, I don't know what the standard procedure is for referrals. I, I'm just looking at our agenda now. And for some in the notes, you have kind of who maybe came up with that referral case in point on expended education funds account, which I hope we can make some movement on. I know in private discussions I've had, again, with several counselors. You know, obviously including Council Bordelon have expressed an interest in tackling that. Perhaps that's something we can do right before or kind of concurrently as we're starting to deliberate on the budget. You know, in years past, when we've brought this, and I brought this up, you know, it was mentioned that we should be doing this before the budget cycle starts, not during. So if maybe we can make some movement on that, I know Council Bordelon has done some research since then and we can tackle that. But nonetheless, I would hope, maybe just a suggestion that we ask counselors or not, whoever is responsible for putting together the actual list to include which counselor made that referral. I know there was a comment made tonight about the length of the number of referrals. And I would just note that several counselors have made countless referrals already. So, you know, I would, I have no, take no qualms with any counselor pursuing the things they care about and would not disparage anyone for providing a plethora of ideas to the council to deliberate on. That's our job. That's what we got elected to do. And I wouldn't belittle any counselor from pursuing what they believe in. We may not agree on all the issues, but I'll fight like heck to ensure that you have the right to talk about the things you believe in. Thank you.
Council Westerville.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is actually the appropriate time to do this, but I absolutely agree with Councilor Franco that the Groton Long Point Bridge has to be a priority. If it were moved up on the list, I think that would be beneficial to everyone. That's it. Thank you.
You, Council McBride?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of items I want to consider, I guess, make referrals was the development of a stormwater authority that the state now allows municipalities to pursue. And with that being said, to utilize the funding stream that that could provide to develop and assist the coastal resiliency plan. So I think that's something I'd like to look into further to see if it makes sense. And I'm not sure if it's a referral, but I think it's kind of what everybody's talking about, developing a master plan. And what I'd like to see is the development of a ten-year consolidated cash flow. So we can see the impacts of all these decisions we're making, because I think sometimes councils make decisions to purchase the property, to pursue a ball field, whatever it is, and we're not really thinking with a ten-year long plan, long-term plan on how that's going to impact the bill rates. So I'd like to see, I don't know if it's something John Bird is something the staff does or something we work on, but I do think it's important this council considers the ramifications, the long-term ramifications of all the decisions that are being made. So especially with the debt that we have currently that I was made aware of. So I just think it's important to look at. And one other thought, I know we're talking about these items, maybe do we ever take anything off of these items? If somebody's put that on there, do we anytime remove agenda items or do we ever prioritize these as a council? Maybe something to consider because it is a large list. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Managerbird?
I was going to mention that, that a couple of things. One, yeah, you know, there's, I don't see any chance of getting through all these in two years, not even close. So either we, I'm going to need guidance on taking them in order or the council is going to have to rank them out, which order to take them. Little things will fit in here and there, like the totem pole is not that big a thing, you know, we'll fit that kind of thing in, but a lot of these are very major things. But in terms of removing anything, for instance, the bridge repairs, we already have individual things for the bridges going on. We have the, you know, Stonington, North Stonington Bridge next week. We have GLP Bridge is a separate item. The only other one that was on that list was Quaker Farms. We've already started it and it'll be wrapped up with the new CIP if it gets funded this year. So that's one you could drop off. I don't know, former counselors, a period, put in the Performing Arts Commission. That's never really been mentioned since it was initially put in. I don't know if the council wants to keep that on there, something to consider.
I would support that.
Removing it or keeping it?
Keeping it.
Is there any, another thing to mention? Besides Cindy's office, the finance department, pretty short staff right now. On top of that, her and I are now in the thick of the budget meetings. All, you know, most of our days now are involved with budget things. Her and I won't be able to take anything on really until the end of May. Nothing major anyways, only minor things. So just so the council keeps that in mind.
Thank you. Council Bordelon.
Thank you. In response to Council McBride's idea of the cash flow ten-year plan, I think that's actually nicely thought out. And definitely I support that in the sense that looking at this master plan and then, you know, finding out where do we want to be? What do we want to see? And having the flow of that is all definitely appropriate. And I think sometimes in Groton, we are reactive versus proactive. And I think if we map things out, you know, in a way, we would have that, you know, projection. As far as this sheet here, I would urge the council not to delete any items. I think then that just because there's a full list doesn't mean there's nothing in the rules or that I read that says if we have a full list that we're necessarily required to get to them. If a counselor has put something on here that they'd like to remove, that's one thing. But I think this is a brainstorm of ideas and it shouldn't be that we, what we put on here is what we plan to achieve necessarily. Because in councils to come, it's good to see what has come, come up and ways in which we can move to these. I do agree that we should probably rank and move some of them around, but the order they're in doesn't mean the order we have to take them. Some things might need more time. Other things might be quick by just review of the ethic or ordinance or, or, you know, looking at a way to hold a public hearing or something like that. So I encourage that we keep a robust list because this is the work. This is part of the work that we are doing on a daily basis. And those ideas should stay somewhere in a, in a format and not be necessarily deleted. So that would be my thought. I can agree with Council Bumgarner by adding who and what in the note section, but I think it's really important to have on these because in two years, other counselors may not serve or run. Or there might be an item here that some counselor might put on that they don't feel they have the support of the current counselor. And in two years, it might be a better time to bring it up or, or someone else that might take a seat one day might say, wow, Council Franco's idea that never got on. And, you know, I would like to bring that forward because they share the same idea. So I think let's not look at this as an achievable goal. Look at this as a mapping of ideas as a brainstorm to, to an overview, but I do think we should narrow it down. So that, that would be my thought. I think anything that's gone on here came on here with passion and thought and, but let's look at ways of prioritizing and working through this in some other fashion. So that would be my thought. Thank you.
Council Franco.
Also to mention, the ethics ordinance was also going to be something the Ethics Committee would be reviewing. It wouldn't be the council working through the whole thing. That was something that I had requested go out. So that would be a simple one that might like flow through us very quickly and might be able to go out. Neighborhood parks and playgrounds, and that's also where I had, we discussed this in the previous council. And where we could get the Parks and Recs Committee to probably do some of this. So maybe if we could just bring it back to us and neighborhood parks and playgrounds, something that we could send them something to review and try and come up with. It's not like we're going to be doing the work as well. I also think while I don't know how to say this very politically correct. But I think that sometimes when we're taking some of these referrals and we're discussing them at our council meeting, I think it's, our meetings are going very late and we do have a lot of work to do. But I think like there's some things that are just being absolutely repetitive. The same things are being said over and over again, and I don't think it's necessary. And I think in Robert's roles, there might even be a rule about it and might have to be enforced. Because it's the same, some of this, I just don't know how to deal with the repetitiveness. Sometimes there's some grandstanding being done. And I encourage us as a council to find a solution to this. So our meetings aren't going so late. And that
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Um, you know, calling people that are elected here as grandstanding, I, I don't know who that's in reference to, but I find that to be a personal attack. I think that's an interpretation of a counselor. And one could find that as, you know, you know, we respect other counselors when they send their referrals and the amount of items that they speak about. And we need to give everybody the respect, but just call people or folks, and it must be one of the eight of us out of the nine that is being, you know, considered grandstanding, I find extremely offensive. And I ask that that to be taken back. Thank you.
Okay, Council Franco. We, I think the council understands your point. We have a lot of items and people are passionate about them. They talk. But just be careful about implications of other counselors. But thank you.
And our motives. Thank you.
Yeah, the floor, Council Franco.
And I I also, from previous councils that I've done that had been successful and what I consider successful. When people discuss things, there was no personal attachment. And there was basically no political leaning. And I think that made things go much smoother. And that's all I have to say. I just, I would just hope that maybe the repetitiveness could be cut down. Thank you.
Council Melendez, point of order again, political leaning. It's, it's once again imposing that here is
Point of order is not debatable, so it's not
Already said my point of order.
Your point, and you cannot go into deliberation about it.
I'll wait for, thank you.
All right. All right. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Perfect.
Second. Second.
Not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions that carries unanimously, nine to zero to zero. We are adjourned at nine forty-seven PM. Thank you. Abstentions that carries unanimously nine to zero to zero. We are adjourned at nine forty seven PM. Thank you.